I'd like to call this Washington County Board of Education meeting together. After a moment of silence, I would like for Mr. Ron Barkley to stand up and lead us in the pledge of flag.
Pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you fellow David Crockett person. Thank y'all for coming. I'm looking, I don't see no county commissioners. I see one, uh, two principals, so thank y'all for coming tonight. I need a motion to consider the consent agenda.
Some move?
A motion and a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiner?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh. Okay, now I need a motion to consider the meeting agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we add a resolution to new business if I could please.
Okay, I need a second on this amendment. Okay, discussion? Roll call vote please on the amendment.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiner?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh. Okay, now I need a motion on the agenda as amended.
Some move?
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiner?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh. Okay, directors report. Mr. Flanner?
Some months ago, East Tennessee State University won a grant funded by the United States Department of Education. It's called Integrating STEM and Literacy with Computation Elementary Education or ICELICE. The amount awarded was over $665,000 and Grandview Elementary School was right in the middle of it. I do not think that what you are about to see has ever happened in a board meeting before. And I'm not going to embellish that any further. Principal Rachel Adams and first grade teacher Melanie Barkley, please come forward and bring those Grandview Eagles with you and tell us all about this.
Well, I'm just gonna introduce you. I probably don't have to introduce you guys to Ms. Barkley. She's first grade teacher here at Grandview Elementary School. And this is Ms. Sanders. She is a student teacher or a fellow for the grant that Ms. Barkley's gonna share with you about. And then these are some of her first grade students. Can you say hi?
Hi!
They felt like they were at court. So, we were very honored and just so ecstatic that we were chosen to be able to participate in this grant. Like Dr. Flannery said, there was a large amount of money that was put into this grant and quite a bit has went into Grandview. So, Ms. Barkley's gonna tell you all about it and tell you how much it's benefiting our students. One of the things I just wanna share is it's amazing to see, you're gonna be blown away by what these little guys can do. Probably none of you can do it. I know I can't do it. But what we're hoping to do is, I'm requesting, they're trying to extend the grant, so I'm requesting to add a couple of more classrooms next year. What we would like to do is, right now we have it in first grade, so our goal is to hopefully get a classroom in second grade and third grade so we can continue what's happening in first grade. And we're also gonna look at some ways that we can reach out to the school system, maybe through some grants and sustain it on our own because I don't know how much we'll get from ETSU, so. But I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Barkley. She's the star of the show.
I'm having to know I'm not the star. Right here, what I'm gonna do is, I've told the children, they're gonna sit right here and they're gonna start working on these things. Well, and I have a PowerPoint of just a little bit of information. This is Sam and this is Hudson. This is Braxton. This is Case. This is Sophie. And this is Caitlin. And you guys, you wanna go to your stations that you're gonna work on tonight and go ahead and get started? Okay, while they're getting everything turned on and, and like I said, this is Ms. Sanders. And she's a student teacher that's gonna be with me until March. And as we go through the slides, I'm gonna tell you a little bit of what she's been doing with the children. So, right now she's just gonna sit down with the kids and make sure. Like Dr. Flannery said, right here, ETSU received over $600,000 to integrate STEM and literacy with computation in elementary education. Last spring, I was approached by Dr. Cheechee Thai. He's a professor at ETSU and he's the man who wrote this grant. And at first, I wasn't sure what I was getting into. I thought I was getting some professional development. Sure, I'll go to class for a week. This sounds interesting. All of a sudden, I felt like Christmas had been dumped in my lap when I started finding out more and more. I did go to a summer class for a week. We, and I was, I was a student and I was learning about what was gonna be brought into this classroom and how it was, it's just not fun, although we do have fun. But, they wanted us to use it not just for mathematics, but to find ways to use it with literacy as well, which is a number one thing for me teaching six-year-olds. We have to know how to read. Who's involved? Well, there's 12 teacher candidates who are spending the upcoming year as student teachers. And there's different counties and city schools across this region. And they're, these student teachers such as Ms. Sanders, she has been trained to help me learn as well. This is, I don't think you would call it an added endorsement, but it's, she has more information. She's had extra classes than just a normal student teacher. And so, she is my expert. There's been days I have actually, one day I even called her while she's in class and said, "You need to leave class. I have a question." And you know, I appreciate her openness and her willingness and not to laugh at me, but to help me. And so, I feel like we have a partnership going right now where I'm teaching her what I've been doing for over 20 years and she's teaching me about things that I've not done. So, it's been a good relationship. And like I said, she'll be with me through, uh, through March and then she'll be getting her license and she'll be ready for a job next year. Okay, so, everything we're doing up here on the floor, the main thing behind it is coding. We're gonna be coding with some robots. We're gonna be coding on iPads. And you wanna know why is that important? Well, the number one thing is it helps children become problem solvers. It helps our children develop resilience. It teaches them how to think and it's expanding their creativity. If you look at the problem solving and helps children develop resilience, you think about the society we live in today. We're in instant societies. When we have a problem, what's the first thing we do? We Google it. Because we want that answer immediately. And as a teacher, while I do that as well, and the children know how to Google things, we have a responsibility to teach them that we have to work for things. We have to solve it and we have to be able to explain our answers, no matter what job you're in. My job is different than your job. And you know, we all learn differently and it's up to us to have that professionalism to understand and to be able to explain it to others. Too often, we give children answers to remember rather than problems to solve. And I found this slide, it really stood out to me. You think about when that little Rubik's Cube was developed. I know, the first time I finally got one side with one side cut, I was ecstatic. I didn't want anyone to touch it because it was hard for me, it was hard for me to do that. Well, you know, that's what I want these kids to do, take ensure, have that pride of, "Look what I've done. I've solved a problem." And it's okay if I make a mistake. And that's one of the number one thing we have, that we've found working with coding is, I'm wanting to teach the children, if you mess up, it's okay because when you make a mistake, you get smarter. Mistakes make us smarter when we go back and figure out what was wrong and we fix it. So, in my classroom, that's something we talk a lot about. It's okay to make a mistake as long as we go back and find out what we need to do to better ourselves. So, the first thing we're talking about is the B-bots and the blue bots. And that's what Case and Sam are working on right now. These are little robots. And you can see, they are coding them right now to go to certain numbers. Blue B-bots and blue bots, they help us with sequencing, with estimation, with problem solving. And like Case told me today, he said, "Ms. Barkley, we just have fun." And, and we do. And that's what, you know what, they're in first grade right now. I don't want them to see school as being a chore. This is someplace I want them to come. Because they're gonna be in school for the next 12 or more years. And if I can teach them to love what they're getting to do each day, it's all worth it. I use B-bots and blue bots across the curriculum. Right now, they're doing a math game. There, we've used them with vocabulary and reading. We have used them in social studies to create maps. If you look up here, you can see a picture. The first picture is, uh, the children made, they had to identify places on a map. They had, they had task cards where it said, "Take me to the hospital," or "I'm gonna take the B-bot to the park." And they had to read the task card and get the robot there. They have to count how many times they need to push that button and if he needs to turn. And what's wonderful is, we can do it at different levels. You can do it, "I'm gonna mark, go forward three times and see where he lands." Or, right now, we've got, the children are thinking the whole code in their head. They, that's what Sam, they were doing. They were counting it in his head. Uh, we have a video of this next student. He's working with another child. And whereas at the beginning of the year, we started with only one B-bot on a map, well, like we have tonight, two B-bots. And you, you have to still complete your task, but don't let, you're not allowed to touch them and you're not allowed to let them run into each other. So, let's see if I can get this video to work. Hey guys, are you ready to listen to this one? Here we go. Oh, no, I didn't do it. It's gonna reset.
Takes a second. We tested it today.
I need the kids to code it. Okay, your place not gonna work, that's all. Oh, there it goes.
What was your problem? What did the two take away from it? Alright. Now, what are you gonna have to do now? Okay, it's okay.
Okay, so I hope you noticed, one of the things was, the other student said, "Oh, he landed on the wrong number." And we said, "That's okay. You gotta get him there." But then, he almost ran into the other one and that's the little boy sitting there and he was like, you can't hear it, but that's what he did. And, and I hope you noticed, when he was getting ready to code him, he decided not to have him turn and face and go forward. He wanted him to travel backwards, so that's why he climbed. You know, the thinking was just amazing what was going on in the background, how he wanted to get him to his destination. Another thing that we have going on in our room are called OZoBots. Now, these OZoBots, hey Hudson, do you have one in your hand? Or Caitlin, you have one? Hold it up. Let me, Barkley, hold it. Look how small this is. This is another robot. And this robot is, he identifies lines and colors and codes on, on this type of surface, on a flat surface, but he can also work on a digital surface. We're working on this tonight. And what we do is, we look at these colors and the children have to use markers to color blocks in as to how they want the robot to work. And they have to notice the sequence to make sure it works the right way. And what is incredible is, if you look at the word tornado, they have to color it red, green, red, green. But if you go down to spin, it goes to green, red, green, red. Well, the tornado spins faster and we talk about that. And they have to notice if the robot is going one direction, he'll do a tornado. If he turns and goes the other direction, he slows down. These are realizations that the kids are coming across themselves as they use these different robots. We have used this to code, like when we're reading stories, to go from place to place. When we were studying about the White House and the Capitol, we created a map and we had to get the OZoBot to go across Washington DC to get him to his specific place. In this first, I wanna watch one more little video. And this video right here is incredible to me because it shows how our thinking, how children can. This first video was done at the very beginning of the year when we were studying Little Red Riding Hood. Very simple story. And so, an extension after we had done different activities was, we wanna get him from one house to the other, from Little Red Riding Hood's home to the grandmother's home. And as you listen to this child, he's going to explain what he wanted this robot to do and he coded him by himself. I was, I had walked away and then when I came back, he explained it to me. So, can we get to listen to this one?
One on the left?
Uh-huh. And I hope you noticed, he said, "First, he's gonna do this and next, he's gonna, second, he's gonna do this." That language is so important for these children to use when they're explaining themselves. The next picture shows another extension where we had read a story about a seed going through the different seasons and Ms. Sanders was doing this lesson with him. And she turned the robot into a seed by just gluing it on, or taking it to the top. And so, we turned our robot into something else. But, and we talked about the sequence of the seasons and how we wanted certain seasons to go by faster. And, and the children were coding, but they're also learning about that sequence, that pattern of how our seasons work. Okay. And, and again, we're still bringing literacy. There are children having to write about what's happening, writing about the story. So, it's not just that we're just playing, but I do believe playing is worthwhile. That's when we learn our best. And then, we have this, I don't know if it'll work or not, but this is a little different when this child realizes that the codes work both ways. We're learning, you know, new words. What does natro mean? What does a turbo boost mean? Which they understand that really well. Another thing that this grant has brought into our classroom, we have eight iPads. And I wanna tell you children, this is wonderful to put an iPad into their hands. They're easy for them to hold and there's so many things we can do. Two of the things that we have, I'm gonna focus on tonight, one is called Story Visualizer. And this, you can see from the pictures, we're teaching the children that stories happen in scenes, in parts, a beginning, a middle, and an end to help them understand that sequence. But when we were first learning about this, we, and I was teaching the children what a scene is, we made, we made little videos about contractions. That was our, that was what we were learning for the day. And so, they were acting me out, what the contract, the sentence said. And so, you'll notice, I'm putting it up on the touch panel. That's another part that we can do with this ICELICE grant is, we already have the touch panel, but with this, with the iPad, they also brought Apple TV into my classroom and I can. they also brought Apple TV into my classroom, and I can mirror it. I can hold the iPad, and I can stand behind the children, and whatever's on my iPad, it puts it straight on the screen. And so, the children can interact with the screen without me being there, and essentially, they can help teach each other. The next day, we put, I put all of these contraction videos on the other iPads, and we worked in small groups, and we talked about it again. So, again, there's so many things that I'm learning, and the children are learning. The next step with Story Visualizer is to use Legos and let them build scenes, and let them build stories. And they're going to be creating their own movies to put into this. We're not there yet, but we will be. And lastly, I want to talk to you, uh, there's a, uh, Braxton and Sophia over here, working with an application called Scratch Junior. This is a coding application, and you can see they're moving blocks. And what, it's, it's simple. It's a, a little cartoon cat, and they have to choose a scene. Maybe it's a classroom, maybe it's the ocean. And they have to put the, the cat doing something special. But they have to count, they have to read a graph, they have to figure out, "What do I want him to do?" They can even add voices and make him talk to them. Uh, it, they can, they're learning language. We, we use the real words, we talk about, this is coding. We're teaching a machine to do what we want it to do. A machine has to be coded. We're using words such as loop. That means it's going to do it over and over again. That's part of, I'm teaching these kids so that they're ready for the next step. When they get old enough to enter these, go into the robotics, which is in the middle school, we want these kids to be ready. And that's what I love about this. And you can hear she, it's, uh, the other children were involved. We don't stop the, the whole classroom just to do one thing. The other children all were involved, and so that's why the, you can't hear it very well. It's actually, it's actually Sophie right here. And, and that was a very simple thing that she made today. I know she was working on one, and they were making him visit the library and actually go to the bookshelf and get a book. And so, the children are, their learning isn't just stopping with, when they succeed at one level. There's so many other levels they can take this to. In conclusion, this grant is opening doors. And, you know, right now, I'm involved in this grant for three years. Hopefully, it'll continue after that. I'm still, I'm still going to try to talk them into it. Because, you know, we live in this society, and our world is changing. And not only do I have the responsibility to teach these children the basics, to love to read, to understand mathematics, to understand science, our world. But you know what? They're going to enter a job course one day, where they're going to be expected to understand how machines work. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm so blessed that I'm getting to learn. Because when I stop learning, that's when I don't need to be teaching. And so, I'm so glad that the children are teaching me. We do laugh a lot, we make mistakes, we fix them. And so, uh, we, we just hope that you'll, you've enjoyed wa- watching us work with these different, uh, pieces of technology. There's other things going on in the room. You're welcome to come by anytime, and just join us. So, uh, thank you.
What did you hear about this grant?
Um, my name just showed up.
Oh, you're welcome. And you'll have a student teacher every year?
No, no.
This is just-
This is, I, 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 to my understanding, this is the only year I'll have a student teacher.
Well, I want a new student teacher to know how lucky you are to have her as a mentor teacher.
I am very aware.
ETSU contacted us and asked if we would participate in it. Called the principal and asked if she had teachers who would be interested, and we felt this would be a good choice.
And we have two other teachers that have attended the professional development. Um, it was, they were allowed to go, and they attended a week of training in the summer. So, they've received the professional development with the technology. Um, unfortunately, you know, we just had the grant in one room, and that's why I'm hoping next year to expand it to some more classrooms. Um, but it's, it's fascinating work, and they focused so much, like Ms. Barkley said, on how to integrate it into math and literacy, which is-
I love all the hands-on, because that's what they need to do. That's how they're going to work.
And you can see how engaged they are.
I was kind of curious, on the one video, I believe it was 10 minus 1, he said 9, and then he programmed the bot. What did, what did, did you do? Whoever wants to answer.
Well, that was a, that was a different little boy than that.
Okay.
Hey, guys, hey, Kay, Sam, if he goes to the wrong number, what should you do?
Try getting him to the right number again.
So, how do you get him not to do the same, to repeat the steps? What do you have to do to his brain?
You have to clear his brain, and to clear his brain, there's a little arrow.
Uh-huh. You have to forget those first directions, forget your mistake, and move on from there.
So, each button you hit sends it in a certain direction? So, if you hit it twice, it'll go two squares? Good job.
And these are the arrows to make it, and you press the green button for that.
Okay.
And I forgot to mention, the one that's clear, he is the blue bot. And what's wonderful about that is, we can use him, uh, we can put him up on the touch panel, and we can use him interactively and do it that way. We just like to use the real thing.
How long have you had the B-bot?
Um, I've got the, I've got a B-bot, um, two years ago when I went to Mathletes. And I learned then about, that was something they were introducing to us at that point.
But this program just takes it to a whole new level.
Yes. And I'm learning, and I can actually buy different things, but they're quite expensive. And so, you know, it's up to me to figure out, we use sticky knobs. I can, and, and you know, I can change those things instantly without having to spend the money. I just have to figure out what we want, what I want the children to do.
And the way we started the kids out was with these, because in kindergarten, they started with this level. Uh, but when I came into the classroom, we kind of stepped it up with the Ozobots. And then, from the Ozobots, uh, we will actually go to another robot later in the year.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're getting ready to go to Dash.
Yeah, he's about this big, so he's pretty big.
You explain things. I like the way you use your hands to explain. I know, because we didn't do much, like, hands-on stuff, and I think that's really good.
Well, that's why we're, we really want to seek out ways to sustain this and continue it into second, and third, and fourth grade, so that they can just build on what they've learned each year.
Professionals, thank you for bringing these children. Kids, thank you for spending your evening with us. Not a matter of whom, this has been the best part of the meeting.
Mr. Flynn?
Ms. Barkley, thank you for, I can see you've got a passion in teaching these kids. Thank you.
I just got to say, uh, my youngest is in first grade under this lady, and she's now a junior in college.
She's in high school, ain't she?
And I was a big change of high school to Mersey.
Uh, some of us old guys don't understand coding. But in November, we were in Nashville, and one of the gentlemen that spoke to the group is, uh, in charge of HR for FedEx Corporate. And he had been trying for three years to hire people who understood and had coding abilities. And for three years, he had not been able to fill all the positions that were open. Okay? So, there's, there's, I realize it's a little bit different level, but it's headed in that direction. So, there's, uh, hundreds of jobs that's out there now, and will be more so in the future too. So, it's awesome, thank you.
Thank you, children.
Boys and girls, we kept your materials.
Did you go to Washington?
I did, yeah.
Where at?
I went to Boons Creek.
Okay.
And then, I went to Boon.
Okay.
Give me a few more months' time for this program? Yes? Oh, uh, well, I have Lishay Dinnings for my advisory gap. Thank you.
You know Bert Ervin?
I do. I worked, uh, many years with her at Med Care, so. Uh, Martin Lawrence Walker.
Martin Walker's a vet?
He is, yes. Do you? Oh, really? Well, I guess he's pretty good.
And she does this, watch this. She does this for you. And she pulls this out, and I say, "What is that?" And I had that phone for months, and she gets a message to show me what it's like. So, if y'all ever heard the phrase "digital native", these kids are digital natives. You're not even a digital native. I remember when a new box of chalk excited me. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to go-
I have a pen that you found.
It's still your car. It's still under direct recording.
Everybody will.
Okay. Supervisors, the mic won't work, so you're going to have to shout, which I'm sure you're used to that, you have to shout at me. Uh, each year, the Tennessee Department of Education releases a report card on every local school system and every public school in the state. The release date was a few weeks ago. I'm hoping that most of you or all of you have looked at it online, but we only now have the opportunity to present a review to the Board of Education. Our last Dr. Cutt, Dr. Keys, and Dr. Myers to now come forward and present Washington County's report card.
Alright. The report card is a summary, basically, that shows how well the district is helping students.
Go get one of them, youngins.
Reached the grade level, um, performance on Tennessee Curriculum Standards, but also how well the district is preparing students for success after high school. Because before you know it, those students who are right here will be in high school. So, let me wait. The state has identified, basically, six key measures of success, and we want to highlight those for you tonight. Those six areas are academic achievement, student growth, chronically out of school, progress on English learner proficiency, ready graduate, and graduation rate. Let's look at number one, academic achievement. Academic achievement shows how well our students in grades three through 12. This chart shows three through 12. How well they understand the Tennessee Curriculum Standards, and what percent of our students are at or above grade level. That's what's reflected there. On the left, you can see Washington County. On the right, how we compare to the state of Tennessee. The light blue represents the, the test data from 2018. The dark blue represents the test data from 2019. You can see that 45% of our third through 12th grade students are performing at or above grade level, and it is combined. You will see math, English Language Arts, and Social Studies represented in those columns. And we are performing higher than the state, as you can well see. And there was basically a 4% increase from 2018 to 2019. So, how do we look in comparison to the other school districts in our first region? If you can see there, we are, of course, the number one county district, but when you take all of the results from third grade through 12th grade in those three content areas, we are fourth in the region. Now, let's look more closely at what overall achievement means. We're going to break it down by math, English Language Arts, and Social Studies. The math academic achievement includes grades three through eight TCAP, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And you can see, again, 45% of our students are scoring at or above grade level on the math TCAP assessments. This was a basically 5% increase over 2018, 2019. And again, you can see that we are higher. When you look at the right, the columns on the right-hand side, we are higher than the state. Now, moving on to English Language Arts. With English Language Arts, this includes grades three through eight TCAP, uh, English Language Arts scores, English I and English II. Again, approximately 45% of our students are scoring at or above grade level on the English Language Arts TCAP assessments. There was a 4% increase from 2018 to 2019. And again, you can see, we are performing higher than the overall state of Tennessee. Then, in looking at Social Studies, the Social Studies achievement includes scores from grades six through eight, as well as the 11th grade US history. The reason it's six through eight, that's all of the, this date, uh, basically assessed this past year. And it will be the same. We will only assess grades six through eight in Social Studies this year, 2020. Uh, we had 47% of our students who were at or above grade level, and there was a 2% increase then from 2018 to 2019. And again, we are higher than the state. Please note, this year, we do have new standards. We are implementing new curriculum, state curriculum standards in Social Studies this year. This will be the first year for that. Then, moving on, the second area that the state wants to determine success for a school system is student growth. Schools are rated from a Level 1 to a Level 5 to indicate how much students have improved or grown for one year in the classroom. And a Level 5, of course, indicates the most growth. And this chart includes scores from grades three through 12, instead of four through 12, because we do administer the second grade test, TCAP test. And because we administer the second grade TCAP test, we are therefore able to have growth scores in third grade. These growth scores then contributed to the improved overall T-Bot scores in seven of our schools. Boons Creek Elementary, Ball Branch, Grandview, Jonesboro Elementary School, Lamar, Ridgeview, and Westview. Any question? Then, I will turn this over to Dr. Myers, and she's going to talk to you about chronically out of school. But me, I'm listening.
Hey, Dr. Cutt, before you get started, would you back up one slide? Um, five, 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 and five. What, tell us a little bit about what's going on with, why we're at a Level 3 in math.
That can be a reflection of some things going on at particular schools in, in certain grades. We can pretty much, uh, pinpoint where that was an issue at some, at some schools in elementary as well as high school. And we're working on that.
Yeah, it, it, do we have a plan to move that from three to four?
The point that needs making, Level 3 is at expectations.
Right.
Four and five is, is just grading.
Depending on whose expectations you're talking about.
We like five.
This is based on what's called a bouncing disposition. 66% of the school systems in the state are supposed to be Level 3. The fact that we're at five says a whole lot about-
Oh, oh, yeah, I don't, I don't want to down- Oh, well, yeah, I don't want to downplay that at all, and that, you know, but I. It'd be great to have all fives.
Oh, oh, yes.
Do you have a breakdown, school by school?
It's on mine. Anybody can look at it.
Yes. And if you want more information about this, we have it charted, and we can talk in more detail if you, if you so choose. Just let us know.
Will we get the report card as a whole, like what we've just seen, the, the breakdown? Does that include UH, or are they pulled out of that, or are they included?
When you see Washington County as a whole, university schools in there, which you can see university schools separately too. And they do make a statistical difference.
Let's talk about chronically out of school. So when you're talking about this, there are really two main things to consider to be able to wrap your head around what the numbers actually mean. The first thing is what does chronically out of school mean? So we're talking, when we're talking about kids who are chronically absent, about kids who have missed eighteen days or more of school, and that's ten percent of the school year. So the second thing to really understand is when this data is pulled, and when you're looking at this data, the data is not differentiated between excused and unexcused absences. So in that data, it is just how many days you missed. So a kid could be chronically absent because they had a hospitalization that caused them to go over eighteen days, or they could have gone on family vacations. When you're looking at the data, it's all in there together. So if you'll look at our data, um, this is an area that's a little bit different than what we usually look at. We, districts want to see your numbers decrease instead of increase when you're talking about proficiencies and things like that. So if you'll look at Washington County schools for nineteen, we did see a decrease from eighteen. We're at thirteen point three percent. We're still slightly above the state average. However, it's very important to understand that in 2015, when this became a major conversation, since then, we have decreased one point three percent, which is really great. Mr. Murphy, his staff, the principals, and the teachers, they work at this diligently every day. This is a focus and a priority. It's something that we are proud of where we are in our achievements, but we also realize the work that needs to be continued, and we're definitely committed to that. So that's kind of the summary of chronically out of school. At this point, I'll pass it over to.
The fourth measure, the English language learners, we did not have enough students to get any data for that. So I want to go ahead and talk about ready graduate. It's our newest measure. And so, in the past, it was all about graduation. Right now, it's how many of our kids are prepared and ready for life after high school. So ready graduate is determined by, the students can do any of these things. An ACT score of twenty-one or higher would make a ready graduate. An SAT score of ten sixty or higher. Four early post-secondary opportunities, and I've defined that at the bottom for you. It could be four AP courses. It could be a combination of AP and dual enrollment. It could be an industry certification, where they've actually passed and got that certification. And we've honored those kids in here before, where it could be dual credit. So any of those combinations up there, four of those episodes or two episodes in an industry certification. Some industry certifications count as more than just the industry cert. It might count for two episodes also. And Crystal's going to talk about that when she comes up to talk about CTE. Or it could be the ASFAB. If they get a thirty-one or higher on the ASFAB, and they earn two episodes, would make a ready graduate. So for the graduating class of 2018, our data that the state delivers does is kind of old when we're talking about data. We already have another graduating class in between this. But forty-five percent of our students who graduated in the class of 2018 were ready graduate, which means that they had those things. That's a lot. If you look at the state average, we're about five percent higher than the state. So our kids are really doing a good job. Our average ACT composite is twenty point seven for the class of 2018. That's continuing to increase, and once again, we're above the state average. The sixth measure, the last one, is graduation rate, and I know that we celebrated that when we did our data release. But once again, this is a class of 2018. So if you look at it, it's ninety-three point two percent, and I wanted to note that last year's was a ninety-four point five four percent. So since 2015, we're up five point seven percent in Washington County schools. Any questions about that?
Can you go back to the ready graduate?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Go back to the chart. All right. So we're doing better than the state averages?
Yes.
So where we rank with all the systems across the state?
I can pull that data for you. I do not have it in front of me right now.
We'll compare it later.
Yes.
Top third, middle third, bottom third?
Top third, please.
Okay.
And this is driven by ACT scores. I mean, there's a lot of options out there, but it's driven by the twenty-one makes it, and we've, we've got work to do. We look good.
Is 2017 the first time we have data for ready graduate?
Uh, that is new.
Yes, that's a new measure, yes.
See, that's driven by that new federal, every student should see that.
Yes.
And so, you know, it kind of caught us off guard, but we're aligned in scores across the state.
Is UH also in the ready graduate?
Yeah, right there. Ninety-five point eight. Could we see that at some point kind of broke apart with university school, a way to where we could get an accurate gauge on what our school system's doing?
Be tough, because the state's the one that aggregates that data, and if we asked them to disaggregate, they wouldn't be inclined to do it. We have to do it in-house.
Pulling up data, and I'm just kind of curious to see.
And when you talk about graduates, you know, Boone and Crockett will have over six hundred, or they'll only have seventy. So they're not statistically impactful as far as the senior class. But when you look at them with lower grade scores, yeah, they do have an impact.
What about the K-8 world? Because you said there was a difference there, notable difference.
They are not that much. When you compare university school and say grade, Ridgeview, you don't see a lot of difference. In a lot of cases, Ridgeview without score university school. So I don't think that they have a big statistical impact in lower grade test scores. It's when you see things like graduation rate and ACT scores, is when university school, uh, starts to have, starts to pull away. Last time I looked, they have the second-highest ACT average in state kids.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent graduation rate, but only about seven graduates. It still helps. We're lucky to have them, glad to have them.
But they have a smaller number, too. Yeah, smaller school, smaller environment.
How many students does it take to get an English language learner? Is it forty-five?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
Yeah, they were asking about UH, and I pulled it up. I mean, something that's probably more comparable. You know, and I, I really don't mean to compare us to Science Hill. But I mean, Science Hill's ready graduate number, it's not all that different than ours. I mean, they were at like fifty-four.
Our graduation rate's way higher.
Yeah, so I mean, that, you know, I, I think that's good. That says a lot of good things about Washington County.
In your K-8 world, you'll have one class in grade of about twenty students at UH. So you have twenty students that would contribute to each grade levels. So it, like you said, there's not that much of a statistical impact.
It is even a small environment like that said, too.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Dr. Dr.?
Yeah, I, I have a question in just a little bit. Can we, at some point, see, we mentioned it, but we didn't really see. I'd like to see, last year, we had that, the, uh, we showed more like what each, what each school did, teacher did. I like to see that in a comparison as far as just, I know we said we just did better, our school, or however.
School, you can't see teacher.
You want to see teacher-level data?
Well, I just want to see what I seen last year. I was gonna say the same thing.
You can, but only you can.
Okay.
I mean, you can see anything I can see, but it is restricted by state law, and we're happy to show it.
I'd say you can't put it up there.
What you're talking about is when we get our, our testing data, like, we got it back and they show us the level.
It may be. I don't know. It's last year's first time I've ever seen it, but.
You're talking per school, not per teacher?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like Dr. Kite, Dr. Kite said, you know, we're working on it, but I don't know how we're working on it if I can't see where it come from. I need some kind of measure to get.
I think so, too. I've been missing that, too.
I mean, if the same teacher's doing that every year, might need to swap it around a little bit, but I don't have no way to know. But I thought last year, that's what we showed. It might be at a different time. I don't know.
The evaluation data on every teacher is available to you right now. I can show you if you want to.
That's fine.
Just use it.
Yeah.
Behind all doors, yes.
Yeah, but you understand what I'm saying?
I do. And that's something that the staff and the principals look at first.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the ladies that just presented those numbers? This same presentation, I'm going to make part of the county commission at the end of this month, not in the detail we just said. Uh, now, we have not in a long time had any type of, of presentation on career and technical education, and that's my fault. I guess I just got two seconds my ways. Crystal Fink took over, uh, this, this year, is Career Technical Education Director, and has already done a better job than I have given twenty-five years, and that's why I'm not just saying that. She has got a very complete presentation. I will draw your attention to the screen and to what she has to say. It has changed.
Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you, Dr. Keys, lovely assistant there passing out. We have something at the very end. I don't want to give it to you now, because you're going to be mesmerized by it. You're not going to pay attention to what I have to say. So, um, as Dr. Lannery said, I am the Career Technical Director. And just a brief overview, um, we are familiar with, hopefully, Career Technical by now. It used to be called Vocational Education. But in Career Tech, we offer both academic and career-oriented courses. And there are several opportunities, um, that have come down through the state that I'm going to talk about individually. But we do focus on skill trades, applied sciences, and modern technology, and of course, career preparation. I had went to a seminar a couple months ago, and these statistics really stunned me. If you look here, um, this is one research, ten to forty percent of accepted students into college don't even show up to class the first day. Half of those students don't earn a degree. Only twenty percent of first-generation students earn a degree. The ones that do stay, you can see here the difference of they can change their major. This number right here astounds me. Um, I have a daughter now that's graduated college, and to think that I spent all her time and money, senior year of college, and then she says, "Mom, that's not what I want to do." And unfortunately, that's happening. So our Career Technical classes, it is proven that students with greater exposure to Career Technical are more likely to graduate from high school, enroll in a college, be employed, and earn higher wages. This is just one study, but there are multiple studies that show the effectiveness of Career Technical. These are some of the aspects of industry that we focus on in Career Tech, and I believe this is why our students are so successful. We look at things like finance and business planning, management, health, community issues, technology. This one is huge, is personal work habits. I'm going to talk about that a little bit, uh, later. But these are, again, all aspects of industry that all Career Technical programs discuss. I'm going to talk a little bit about our academics and how we choose what we do at both high schools. Tennessee is divided into sixteen career clusters. If you look at any state data board, um, it will tell you it is organized into these sixteen categories, and I've listed them here. Advanced manufacturing, transportation. We offer, in Washington County, eleven, eleven of the sixteen, which is very impressive. And in the blue, you can see, we're getting ready to add another career cluster, um, starting full force in fall. We started it a little bit this semester. But that's very impressive that our county offers that many, uh, career clusters. Inside of the career cluster, it is divided into different pathways. We call them programs of study. You may hear that term, excuse me, or pathways. And these are grouped, uh, let's say, health science, that's the one I'm most familiar with. If you think about health science, there's many careers in health science. Do they want to be a nurse, pharmacist, doctor, dental assistant? So all of the career clusters, again, are divided into these programs of study. And that is actually the sheet that I handed, uh, Dr. Keys handed you. You can see by comparison, uh, organized and by the career cluster, and you can see which high school offers which program of study. And again, we do offer twenty-eight programs of study, which is, I feel, very impressive for our county. For looking at student enrollment, I did a breakdown. Daniel Boone, uh, right now, has four hundred eighty-four students in Career Technical, four hundred and fifty-four at Crockett. And some of these students actually are in multiple programs of study, so I had to go through and count. But this is the number that we have right now in our Career Tech programs. We also offer work-based learning. Work-based learning is a little different. It used to be called co-op back in the day. Uh, we have really expanded, uh, our work-based learning apprentice programs, health science clinicals. These students actually go into the hospital setting or a doctor's office, and they are working one-on-one with our patients. You have internships. There's school-based enterprise, where students can actually work and learn a trade inside the school. Service learning, uh, that's for our special pop students, that they can go out and learn a trade, and then, of course, our transition activities. These are our numbers right now for, um, our county, Daniel Boone. You can see the numbers here, the total, and also for Crockett. Right now, we offer entrepreneurship or co-op. These students can go out to, um, any type of business and industry. Or, and we have some of our agriculture students that are going out to farms and working, and then, of course, our health science. We have a certified nursing assistant and medical assistant. And I wanted to include this summer, even though these students did not receive a work-based learning credit, we had, you can see, six students at Boone and seven students at Crockett that worked a construction internship this past summer. That was very successful, and we're going to continue that this summer. We also offer our Career Technical student organizations. These are to promote what we call well-rounded students. These students, uh, can compete in multiple competitions, but they also, uh, receive what I call relevance in the classroom or from the classroom instruction. They get leadership skills, citizenship responsibilities. And this is also a great way for our students, uh, our special pop students to be involved in a Career Tech, um, organization. Industry certifications. We talked about that in our previous, uh, presentation. You can see, we offer ten industry certifications right now, and I've listed those. Occupational safety and health administration, or OSHA, is the newest one that we did this year. We also have this new, uh, Master Auto Technician. Some of these tests are very rigorous, and they're, they're very difficult to pass. We, um, we do a great job, and our Career Tech teachers do an amazing job to prepare these students.
By the way, we have funding to pay for the kids to go take these tests. They don't have to come up with money out of the pocket. Some of these are pricey.
Yes. Uh, for instance, the clinical medical assistant was a hundred and fifteen dollars per student. Some of them are seventy-five, some are fifteen. I've tried to work out as many deals with companies as I can, but we do have, uh, money that we can pay for that. And, you know, hopefully, our students will take advantage. Right now, this is just the fall. You can see the numbers here of students that have taken advantage. We've had, uh, OSHA Construction and OSHA General Industry, the students at Boone and Crockett. Crockett had an emergency medical responder and a ASE. Those are two programs that Boone does not offer at this time. And then Boone had a certified clinical medical assistant, um, this fall. And we will have the rest of those in the, uh, spring semester, and hopefully, I can give you guys those numbers, um, next time we meet. These are just some of our kiddos. Also wanted to mention dual credit opportunities. We have an articulation agreement with Northeast State, and the students can go and take these tests. Our instructors teach the course. They can take the test. This is a business, and this one is a health science course. These are three-credit-hour courses that the students can go and take this test, after our instructors teach, and they get college credit for free. Now, of course, those have to be at, um, Northeast State, but if that student goes on and gets their degree at Northeast State, those will transfer to four-year universities. And we will do that again in the spring. Work keys. I think you guys have heard of work keys before. This is our results for the fall semester. We were very successful. First Tennessee Development District worked with us again to provide, um, the, to pay for these tests. Also notice here in the blue, work keys is now an accepted Northeast State credit. It is a three-credit-hour course, so if these students have on their transcript work keys. They haven't told us which course it's going to count for, or which level it's going to count, but they've told us it's going to count for something, so we're waiting to see what that is. Also, if you notice, in Washington County, sixty-four employers either recommend or require work keys. or require, uh, work keys testing. These are some of the things that we're wanting to do as we move forward. Um, we want to increase our number of work-based learning, uh, teacher coordinators. There is a certain sort of, or a different, excuse me, certification that our teachers have to go through. We want to increase our number of industry certifications. Uh, Crockett is going to be adding Microsoft Office next year. We want to, of course, I mentioned already, continue our summer internship for construction, and we are adding a forklift certification. We have a company coming in from Knox School that's doing that for us. We are beginning information program of study, uh, information technology. These students, uh, it is actually, if you look at any Tennessee data dashboard, it is the number one highest wage, um, in our area. So we wanted to, um, include that. We actually just received a ten thousand dollar grant to get us started. ETSU, they've heard what we're doing, and they want to be a part of it. They're offering free Adobe Student certifications, and they're also training our instructors for free. We just, uh, are part of a million-dollar grant, uh, that was awarded with TCAT. These students are allowed to work in this mechatronics, uh, things like advanced manufacturing, electrical, and mill route. They do have industry certifications available. And TCAT is offering ninety clock hours of credit. And I have a meeting with them tomorrow. We'll get all the, every, all the bugs worked out. Uh, our students will be, have a nine-week course. They're bringing out a mobile lab to both high schools. Additionally, we are starting a EMT basic program. This is the only one in the state, and I'm very excited about this. This is very personal for me because I wrote an initiative about four years ago, and it's just now started. Uh, but these students can receive their EMT basic. Holly Backburg at Crockett will be starting this program, and they'll be getting fifteen dual enrollment credit hours. And they only ha, after they finish with EMT basic, they have about three semesters, and they can become a full paramedic after high school. We're also still working on getting a student-led bank at Crockett. We, of course, you all know about the West Coast Tractor coming out. We just received a drone technology grant. Drone technology is about an eighty-billion-dollar industry. And, uh, Mr. Dawson at Boone just wrote a grant, and we'll be hopefully working towards that in the fall. We take our students to career quest, field trips, uh, any type of awareness we can. And I could go on and on about career technical because I'm very passionate about it, but I'm going to stop and see if you all have any questions. Yes?
We had a lot of people, or Tommy Burleson, last time in a construction update, was talking about how good those internships did. How, do you think we'll double that number this year? Did we have more people ask for more?
Well, it's, um, it's kind of twofold. So I've already talked to our construction teachers at both high schools. We want to send students who are, first of all, interested in that industry, and we want to send students who are going to show up on time, and we know that they're going to be very productive. So the question that you asked me is, yes, we do want to increase that. I don't know how many students that they have because we just started this semester. Um, I don't know how many, but yeah, absolutely want to increase that. And plus with the forklift certification, that's one thing that, uh, Tommy Burleson had asked. So we're, we're real excited about proceeding.
So the internships during the summer, they don't get any credit for those?
Unfortunately, because they're not technically in school, they're not receiving any work-based learning credit. Now, any of the industry certifications that they receive, even, well, any student, if they receive an industry certification even outside of school, the state is letting us use those for their ready graduate indicators?
That's what I was getting at, is if those things were going toward their ready graduate because...
They don't get a credit, like a school credit, but yes, the industry certifications, they will toward their ready graduate. Yes, sir?
Um, I was, uh, pleased to see the drone grant on there.
Yes.
Um, in, in speaking from, uh, serving on the Air Force Commission, the aerospace technology piece that Northeast State's starting to develop needs a pipeline. And, you know, I think it's important that our, that our school system in some way or another participates in that because once the aerospace part comes to fruition, um, you know, there's going to be some fifty, sixty thousand dollar jobs for kids with just a high school degree. What are this work?
Absolutely. I mean, drone technology is used in realtor now, construction, agriculture, it's, it's everywhere. If you need connections, let me know.
I'm pushing that all, all past just drones.
Right.
I mean, the whole aerospace industry, uh, airframe, power plant maintenance. Um, uh, we had a discussion, uh, last month about the huge interest that, that kids in the high schools were generating in pilots, becoming pilots. And it's going to be a huge pilot shortage. Uh, so, and I think it behooves to be outplayed and...
We're real excited about that.
Okay.
Any questions? Any questions? I did, go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to say, you do a better job than Mr. Flannery did, so... You did better than he did in twenty-five years.
When I go to, to meetings, Dr. Flannery is still a legend. Uh, they, they know him.
He's a legend, all right. I can tell you some stories about this legend.
Well, Dr. Flannery, I, I think your county commission would be really interested in your background.
We need to get Crystal in front of county commission and Kate. Oh, in front of county commission. Oh, yeah, let's not overlook the kids.
So what Dr. Keyes is handing out now, this is a magazine. This was one of the first things I wanted to do when I became a career technical director, is to promote our programs, do better recruiting. And this is not for public view yet, uh, because we, Mr. Tipton and I, when he printed it from Crockett, we already identified some of the things we want to change and tweak. But this is a really good information piece that we want to hand out to our parents. We can have some here at central office, but if anybody asks about our career technical, um, you know, we just want them to have a good piece of information to talk about all of our programs of study, um, kind of the national salaries. What kind of skills do you need? And, uh, I'm real proud of this. My, I call him my son-in-law. He's my future son-in-law, actually made this. He has a degree in marketing promotion, so he worked on it, and then Mr. Tipton printed it from Crockett. So, like I said, it's not ready for public view yet, but I wanted to give you guys a copy just to see what, what we're wanting to, um, propose.
Impressive.
Yeah, they did, he did a really good job.
Any other questions before we move on?
Right, very clear.
Thank you.
I want to emphasize, Kate. The only part Crystal talked about, these new directions and initiatives, didn't even exist five years ago.
Oh, yes.
This, this is new stuff. And, uh, we're, we're, we're really breaking their branding. Uh, if we could move on, Mr. Chairman, uh, do a little business here. If you will look in your drop box. Bids were opened on December the twelfth for a fluid cooler replacement, uh, at Jonesburg Elementary School. A document from BLS Thompson and Litten is in the drop box explaining the recommendation, and it is not low bid. Uh, I am requesting board action at this time, hopefully approval of the recommendation from BLS. Thompson. You'd be the town to bring that up and have a look at it.
We don't have all the bids. It just shows the, the one...
It's just the, uh, the narrative from the, I guess, the...
I have those totals in my hands, though. If you, if you're interested in who bid and what they bid, I'll be there to tell them.
I am kind of interested in the, the low bid, yeah, compared to what the recommendation is.
SB White was the low bid at a hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, specifications in the bid specified that the contractor needed to indicate the number of days to complete the work. Unfortunately, SB White left that number off. Uh, Mr. Street from, uh, at least in Lester Street, Thompson, and Litten called them and, and explained what was happening and, you know, uh, as contractors, I understand how important it is to follow those specifications. And, you know, it, it's much that he's, he's understood why we would have to reject his bid. But, uh, you know, it's one of those things, I guess you do, so...
I can't get it. Man, I can't get it up here. Who got the bid?
Norwell.
Norwell?
The next low bid was for Norwell Construction at a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And, uh, we'd use them and, um, other jobs. They've done an excellent job. SB White has. We've used Comfort Systems and Allied Piping. They're all good contractors.
Is Norwell low?
Yes, Norwell is low.
Was there another bid? Do you know what was another bid and the price of another bid?
Okay, Comfort Systems came in at two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Allied Piping came in at one hundred and ninety-nine, nine hundred and fifty thousand.
And then this is, this one includes the second low bid?
Yes.
And who, what would fund this? What would the funding come from?
She's Brad.
It's, uh, it's...
This was a resolution.
Yes, yeah, this is, this will be funded by the county commission from the Capitol, out language.
Make a motion to approve a hundred and eighty-two thousand to Norwell Construction.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion?
A hundred and twenty-five days is that?
Yeah, but it'll be, you know, he, he evidently just put in a good hard number because you never know what the weather's going to do, but we, you know, feel sure he can complete it a lot sooner than that.
And the reason SB White didn't do it is, or didn't get it, is because they left out how many days it's going to take to do it?
Yes.
And it's how much money? I still want to buy it. How much money?
Eight thousand dollars.
No, eight green.
Eight green? I call him, eight thousand's eight thousand. You can't, how does that work? If, I mean, Tony don't have to accept it, but do we have to not accept it?
No, the board can choose to accept a low bid and without spending any specifications. What you do though is set yourself up as a precedent that other contractors, when we bid something in the future, think, well, I left that off, but you ought to let me add that back then, or, um...
There's a reason we put the spec on there.
Well, I understand. I, I bid them, and I understand they can throw them out if you don't do it right, but I'm paying for it. It's eight thousand bucks. I mean, I understa, I know what you're saying.
And, and if I was in a private industry, I might look at this a little different.
Yeah.
But while I'm dealing with the public taxpayer money.
Absolutely.
And have to, and, and trying to keep my T's crossed and my I's dotted. It's a, uh, but the board, yeah, you can actually do what you want to do.
But we don't have to accept a low bid if we feel like a different bid is better suited for our situation.
That is correct. You might get a low bid from someone that we've had experience with, and we didn't get a very good piece of quality work from. And you decide, well, let's go with the second low bid because it's close enough, and we know what those biggest folks can do. Yes, sir.
But SB White's very qualified.
Yes. I'll, again, like I said, all three, all four bidders are qualified.
But you don't know how long it's going to take.
They could never finish. They didn't say how long it'd take?
You can do about it.
I wouldn't imagine they want to drag it out.
I wouldn't either. But do we want to take that chance for eight thousand dollars?
Well, they're a professional company. I mean, do whatever y'all want, but eight thousand dollars, eight thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a vote. Motion.
Can we get a motion?
He made the motion. Do I have, did I get a second? Yeah, I did second it. On the second high, second bid of the power, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Flannery?
It's ma'am.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Uh.
Mr. Baird?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Did you, did you? Okay, okay, did you?
Yes.
No.
Thank you.
I made my money. I don't like the instance of mine.
Discussion.
Right, okay. Do you see? What, what have you got?
We have a couple of them. At the December meeting, the board directed an estimate to be solved repairs to the Daniel Boone High School roof, and that the estimate be presented to HEW. That estimate came in at two point six million dollars. And the request for capital funding was presented to HEW, uh, at their meeting at one o'clock this afternoon. The matter was postponed by the committee until their February meeting ostensibly to find out if they had that much money left. Uh, other school system business was discussed. A full report, it will be lengthy, on today's HEW meeting will be in tomorrow's weekly update. Now, one thing did happen that, uh, that needs your attention. HEW requested a current copy of the board's capital priorities list. Given the frequency of how often that document changes, I thought that we ought to put in front of you tonight the current, up-to-the-minute capital priorities list. And if nothing else, let you see it and hopefully maybe even adopt it. Uh, but either way, uh, they would like to see it as early as tomorrow. This is it, and it's not off the presses. Hunch, it's too old.
It sounds like I have a... Is there any difference between this one and the last one?
Oh, boy.
Were you approved?
Uh, there's, there's no difference in the projects. There's difference in, um, where you are in the process. Like, some of these are in funding, some of these are underway. Uh, so that has changed. And most of those edits are in red, and they were added to, added to the best. But none of the projects have changed. Only what the board has approved is what's in front of you. And I, I guess I would ask or recommend that you approve it as your current capital priorities list.
Dr. Flannery?
Yes?
Um, just, just like, sometimes these things get pushed back.
Yes.
They understand that.
They, yes.
But they need to understand that things come up too, and they could be placed on this in a, in one of these three years, even though it's not on there now.
Yes.
I know they understand the pushing back part, but the fact that these, yeah, something could pop up, and we have to put it on here, and I just...
I never crawled up today. We did, we, yeah, we actually, we actually...
They're like, and I usually shoulder to shoulder at HEW, and I think they understand as well as the board where this has to be, and the Daniel Boone roof being cased in.
Yes.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pat?
Sir?
How long has the Gray Elementary Brick Repair been on our needs list?
Since it was developed.
Ten years?
Yeah, four, probably four or five years anyway. It may have been, you're right. So long that I can't remember.
I'd say it's been on there eight or nine years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'll make a reprimandation motion that we accept. I'm going to ask about a fourth or something.
Yes.
Go ahead. The Booms Creek Elementary Roof. Do we want to keep that on there, or do we want to get rid of that?
That's kind of a loaded question.
Can we put pending like, uh, the, the middle school roof?
Let me just tell you what's going on with that. Tennessee Higher Education Commission would love for this board to fix that right before they take over that building. Not because it would be expensive, but because it is so hard for them to spend money. As, and it's relatively easy for this board to spend money. But with any luck at all, you'll only own that building for a few more months. And, uh, frankly, I don't work for them. I work for you, and we've got other places we can put a million dollars.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah, I ain't...
So can we mark the, vote to mark that off?
I wouldn't, I don't think we need to take it off. Now, whether we want to push it back.
Push it back?
Because I don't think it needs to come off.
Yeah, but they want us to put a roof on it before they take ownership of it.
We push it back to twenty-one, twenty-two?
So is that something that the county commission? Because I've heard from the, the county mayor's talked about how much they're going to put into this TCAT school.
Mr. Flannery makes a good point.
So that's something that we need to push and say, this is going to happen. You all need to do this for the state.
I don't think they'll put that money in for giving them the building.
I agree.
I agree there too, but, but the county...
I thought you had...
I mean, what, what... They want to tear it down.
This is, this is Washington County School District.
This is our request for capital, okay? The way I look at it. If, if it's capital for a facility that was going to some other third party, why would this Board of Education want to put any money in?
I don't know.
I don't.
I got a question for you.
My point, I don't, I mean, now, the county might, I don't know, but the Board of Education...
Well, we're not, no.
Yeah, what I, what I would look, what I would, what I would submit to you all is that you look at this as if this is all coming out of our fund balance. Now, I mean, I know we don't have that there, but that's, that's where we need to take ownership of it.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, me personally, if it comes down to whether they can put that there or not, and it comes under a roof, I want a roof on it. I mean...
If we're giving it to the state?
Yeah. If they're not going to put the, I'm just saying, if it came down to that.
Whether they take it or not?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah, I get that, I get that.
I leave it on the list. I mean, I'm not, it's not something I take off the list.
See, we can always sell it.
Um, we can't. But I mean, I, I'm just saying, and it's like we said, this is a live document here. The majority of the stuff that's on this year is going backwards anyway. It's going to next year or whatever. So, I mean, it's, I don't think it hurts anything and it makes them aware of it.
I think it's this, I think it's this board's priority that what we feel like needs to be fixed or whatever goes up on this list at the top, that's what, just like the roof at Daniel Boone, we're asking to get that fixed. Now, instead of the brick or anything else, it's, it's our working document. Can I ask you a question? Yes. Is that, and you may, oh, you don't have to answer, I just thought you probably know. So this, this document, do they like actually allocate this money and it's sitting there waiting for us? Or is this just a...
It's used as a plan. It is not, until they actually appropriate money for a specific project. Until like, for example, Doctor, I mean, the, the, the roof, the Boone roof has been on there for several years, all right? On our capital, okay? Until Doctor Flattery went there today to ask them for funding for that. That's the specific appropriation of dollars.
So this piece of paper is really worthless?
No, no.
It isn't an idea.
It's an idea of what they, what we're, what we're in our head.
It's a roadmap with a lot of...
That's what I'm saying, when they're setting aside money to say, oh, next year if they need to put that roof on, it's sitting here. That's all, I was, I was just wondering. Well, that's the way that the plan is supposed to work, but...
We hope they're accumulating some money to fund some of it.
Yeah, I just think...
But this is a guideline for them to, to know what's coming up in the future. I'd hate to take a two million dollar project in there and then say, that's the first time we've heard about it.
That's what will happen.
So, so this...
Yeah, okay.
But, but I, but I do, I do submit to you that I really think that y'all are looking everything on here as if it were coming out of the school's fund balance. Because that's how you take ownership of it. That's how you tell them, yeah, this is really, it's a real deal. You know, if it's something you're expecting them to do, for example, a roof on the TCAP because they want to give it to the state, you know, that, to me, that's not something that we would spend. I mean, I, I don't think we would spend money to put a roof on a building to give to someone.
Right. Well, and I guess that's why I was asking, because that was a good point, and I'm thinking, there's no way I'd put a roof on it to give it away. But, as Todd said, if they actually use this as a live document and, and they're actually setting money aside to say, hey, we may end up having to put that roof on there, then yes, I'm going to leave it on there.
Didn't we hear earlier somebody say that somebody in this process wanted to tear down the rainwater?
The argument right now is between the higher ed people in Elizabethan and the higher ed people in Nashville. Nashville wants to tear down the ground part and bring a brand new building out of the ground.
So why would we even consider putting a roof on it?
Exactly. But let's say Nashville doesn't get its way, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn here. The message that I'm hearing to the courthouse is, we're going to leave this on, and we're not paying for it. Now, if somebody else wants to come up with the money to put a roof on that building, maybe the board will let it flow through.
I think the bottom line is, we're not asking Dr. Flattery to go to the commission and say, hey, we want to put a roof on Boones Creek Elementary. And really, until he does that, it ain't happening. I mean, they're not going to step up and say, hey, we see this on your list, we're going to do this for you.
Let, let me ask this. Mr. Patrick, do, do you see an overriding need to put a roof on Boones Creek Elementary before July one?
I do not.
Then it doesn't need to be in nineteen and twenty?
Well, I said we can push it back, it needs to be on the list.
Yeah, I would, I would submit that you do that at the minimum. Don't, don't put it on there and say, hey, we need to do that this year if we don't need to do it.
But it's really, everything on this side right here, it doesn't mean it's getting done.
No, but you're, but you're saying to the commission, we want to do all this this year. That is what you're saying.
Well, if they were to bless us and do everything else before that, you know what, I'd be glad to put a roof on it.
The dollars aren't there.
Thanks, Tom, history, have they ever?
No, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Patrick, what, David Crockett Boylan HVAC, we've got two point two million on here?
Yes.
And then the one ninety-six, three fifty in red, what, it's what?
That's what we actually spent to put the border in. Now, HVAC, when I say HVAC, that should be HVAC and controls.
Correct. So, so what we're saying is that our, our amount that we want to spend or additionally appropriates the difference between those two.
Correct.
Okay.
Two million dollars.
Okay.
How old is that quote?
Sir?
How old is that quote?
Oh, very old.
So it may be two point two million?
Yeah, it could be, it could be. I mean, you know, this, this, the project to reroof Daniel Boone was the one I updated, because that's the one the county, uh, the Board of Education wanted to look into.
Okay, well...
How many square feet are, how many square feet are there?
Uh, total square footage of Daniel Boone is one hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-six square feet minus. That does not include the new science wing or the new additions at the ROTC building. And, uh, the, uh, budget estimate on that is twelve dollars a square foot. That's to, uh, remove and replace with some contingency built in there.
Those two that you mentioned don't need to be removed, do they?
Sir?
Those two that you just mentioned don't need to be...
That's what I said.
But we, we've got one hundred eighty-two thousand square feet that need to be removed now.
Yeah, yeah.
The total's two hundred and two thousand.
Well, that's the twelve dollars a foot, don't you think about?
Yeah, the budget, that's a budget number. And, and, well, that's got some contingency in it. And the high roof, the high walls around the gymnasium, at the bottom of that roof, there are leaks. When we build this up and put the new ISO board and the new cover on, well, we're going to start covering up those leaks. So we have to allow for that, so there's takes, there's, there's some work has to be done so that any moisture behind the wall comes out on top of the roof. So that's, there's, it's more than just a little regroove job, or a large regroove job, but it's a little more than just regrooving.
Mr. Flannery?
Can we get rid of note three? We do not have any intention of buying the McCorr property, correct?
Yeah.
Note three? Bottom? And I'll tell you something I hear a lot, it's the ten to fourteen million dollars stadium improvements. I mean, that's a constant thing that people keep saying, and I don't know where we, did we come up with that number at one time way back in the day?
We did.
Four years ago.
Yeah, yeah, that was a...
It's supposed to have been done already, but it's got to be pushed back.
And that's, that's eighteen months from now, right? I mean, twenty twenty-one starts eighteen months from now.
I just hope you can make it that long.
I mean, just, I mean, in terms of planning and designing and...
It's not far away.
Yeah.
I have a request for a five-minute break.
When he did it?
No, I don't have a break.
[inaudible]
Are we ready?
We got a pin on here.
All right, back in session. Needed that break. Mr. Gangor.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
If I can. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the capital charge priority list with Boons Creek Elementary Roof being pushed back to the 2021-2022 year and with the number three notes of the Jonesboro Mahoy property being taken off and with the understanding that this is a live document and changes do occur on this.
Ken, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I just have a quick question. Is there any way to, we are calling our new school Boons Creek Elementary, is there any way we can define this to where we know it is not the new school because?
That's the Bayer school.
Old.
Any more discussions?
Previous.
Previous elementary school. Seeing there, I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this. I don't think I need a roll call, do I? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed?
Nah.
Okay.
Do we?
The ayes have it. Sorry.
Do we strike Jonesboro Building Project in prison?
It was in the motion. It's in the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I saw Brad Hale walk into the room of the Warren's box.
What's he doing now?
Okay. The annual agenda requires him, or actually maybe really him, to present the audit report. In my heavens.
He was going to do that at the end of findings. But that's all right.
It's on our agenda.
Oh, is it? Okay. That's right, it is. Very good.
Boy, I have no trouble with that.
This is great reading material. If you have trouble sleeping, this is your ticket out.
I have one more, so if you'd like to.
You know the paper?
We didn't do the course.
I know, that's.
What you have in front of you is your FY19 audit report, four funds, 141, which is your general fund, 142, which is federal projects, and 143, which is the dietary fund. When we're finished with this in a moment, I have the other audit to give you, which is for the school fund, since those were separate. So I'll give you a few page numbers here. The financials for the school, this is the entire county audit report, so since we're a component of the county, the school portion starts on page 163. So the school financials are page 163 through page 174. The school audit findings will be pages 269 through 271, and then the management response to those same audit findings will be page 275 through 277. So that'll save you a little time in going through these. So certainly, right now, I can, I'll try to answer any questions you may have, if you have any at this moment. But there was three findings, none of them were material weaknesses, and we can certainly talk about those right now if you wish, or if you have any questions on the financial section, or if you want to point out where anything is. So it's up to you all. What would you like me to do?
Well, Mr. L, I'd like for you to go to page 167. And I think that's, you know, how did we actually end up the year on the, you know, in terms of the financials in our general purpose school fund? And you might just, although this schedule doesn't show the comparison to budget, but what happened to our fund balance?
Okay. So we ended up having some positive things happen this year on the fund balance. We, number one, pretty much hit our revenue totals for the 67, almost $68 million. And then on the expense side, we actually were a little better on expenses. So on page 167, that Mr. Meredith spoke of, on the revenue section up top, of course, the major fund, general purpose school, that gives you the revenues, $67,747,665. Going down, it'll give you the expenditures. Expenditures was $65,927,827, which means we had $1,819,000 more in revenues than we did in expenses. And then down, go to the next section, totals $130,724, which was additional transfers. And the insurance recovery for $90,245 was just buses, that we had one bus that got totaled last year, so $74,000, $75,000 of that was that bus. We had another one that was about a $14,000 or $15,000 repair, so that's where you get the $90,000. The other, the transfer in, the $40,479, that's federal projects indirect costs.
So that $90,000, $70-some thousand of it has to come back out to go purchase that electric bus, right?
Yes, that is correct. So that's in the fund balance now, but that's going to be coming out as well. So when it goes to the bottom, and that's the number you usually focus on, this is without any restrictions, the total fund balance, without any of the 3% reserves we have to keep, or any of the budgeted fund balance, is $8,079,000. Now, about $2 million of that is going to be required reserves. About 3% of our operating budget has to be kept, so take that off the table, you can't touch that. And then, we budgeted $1.814 million out of fund balance this year, all things being equal, you know, if everything comes in as expected. So another $1.8 million on top of that $2 million is earmarked. So about half of that, you know, you wouldn't touch. But it was undoubtedly a positive year, as far as the financial performance goes of the school system. And we don't know this as we go through the year. It's one of those things, when you have a nearly $70 million budget, it can swing a million dollars one way or the other if you have things happen, so you want it to swing in the positive, in the positive direction. Of course, we do have other places in here where we can look at what lines were positive and negative there. The next page gives you the same breakdown of the school federal projects and the cafeteria. And the cafeteria, that $500,000 we put in federal projects for working capital purposes, that's maintained pretty constant, so that's where that, you can see the fund balance in there is $500,000. Dietary, the cafeteria fund's really making progress, nearly doubled our fund balance this year. So a strong progress in dietary that we're seeing, as you can see, fund balance coming in. Now, this includes $98,000 in inventory, but $934,000 fund balance with about $98,000 of that being inventory, so not cash. But just strong progress in dietary that we're seeing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What is the required amount for fund balance for the cafeteria?
So there's a guideline that says you should keep about three months of expense in reserve, which in our case, three months could be about $750,000. So just now, we're getting to where we're exceeding that, which is where we need to be as well. Take the $98,000 inventory off the $930,000, you're at about, what, $836? So we're now getting to where we, we're now to where we pretty much need to be, at least with that guideline. Of course, any more we can add, they'll be able to fund more capital needs out of the dietary budget as we go forward.
Is that required by state or federal? Because I would take.
It's, I'm going to need to double check that. I was asked that in finance committee. I want to say that's state, but.
Something I meant to ask is the finance, the one over here, but as the cafeteria fund continues to do better, is there an ability to move any of the funds that are currently being paid for in the general purpose school fund, those costs, to the cafeteria fund? And freeing up those cafeteria dollars that are in the general purpose school fund for classrooms?
So you're wanting to know if you can move funds from dietary into the general budget?
Well, we have cafeteria costs that we pay for out of 141.
It's not a great deal.
We have something, right?
There's a section in the budget, you have the dietary director's salary, very small amount of other items, but the biggest extension there is the insurance. And you can't really touch that because they'll, and that's one of the audit findings, is the, it's about $50,000 a month for the dietary insurance for our state plan. So that wasn't being, it predates me, but it wasn't being expensed to the dietary section. It is now.
Right.
Which is part of the amendment we just did last month. So that'll be 12 months at $50,000, but that's not money you can really play with. But the dietary part of the general budget's really small.
Let me ask you a question. When can we start taking money out of their account and start replacing appliances and stuff?
Well, I would, if it was me, I would see how they perform this year, you know, the next six months, and see where it ends up, because if they increase another $300,000 this year, there you go.
That's something that I'd like, you know.
But I think we need to at least target keeping about that $750,000 or $800,000 in there at minimum, it should be. But certainly this year, if they can repeat that $300,000 or $400,000, I think it's $471 is what they increased this year. If that happens again, then I think you're, certainly would be reasonable to take a portion of that and start.
And start to replace.
Okay. Where I was going, and I just now found, non-instructional salaries, food charges, in the general purpose school fund?
Where you at? What page?
One second, you want?
Okay.
Bottom, bottom four. Operation of non-instructional salary services, food charges? That's the number I was kind of thinking of. 602?
Yeah, so a lot of that is going to be your insurance. I think I have my, but if I can pull the budget.
Well, I mean, if we go into this next budget segment, I guess why I'm bringing that up.
I'll bring you a detail of that.
Yeah, if we've got sufficient funds coming in the cafeteria fund, let's see about putting some of those costs back over there.
I just happen to know, off the top of my head, outside of the insurance expense, I mean, there's not a significant amount caused. But I can give you the detail on that, absolutely.
We'll get there when we get.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Hale. Okay. You got another report? Yes, we got the schools now. All right. And I've got a chart, and I'm going to ask Carol, just to put it on the screen, relating to my school activity funds, just to give you kind of a snapshot.
I want to see.
So this would be each individual school. And. Did you get one?
No.
I gave them.
Okay. And do we need more? Has everybody got one?
See what we dispute.
Boy, that was just the right amount. This is the last one. Before I get into this, I'll give you a snapshot. We don't talk a lot about school activity funds in here, so each individual school has their own separate fund, they're audited separately. Then, the dollar amount, of course, is much smaller than our general fund, but the amount of accounting work that it takes, the volume of journal entries is greater, just because you have so many clubs and so many, just so many deposits and activities. So what you see on the screen is this just gives you that cash in the bank with each school. And if we need to enlarge that, let us know, but that just gives you, this is FY19 as it ends, so Crockett has the most cash in the bank. Now, this would be their fund balance. Now, keep in mind, probably 80 or 90% of what you see up there on those numbers is restricted funds. It's in maybe 50, Crockett especially, maybe 100 different accounts for clubs, and it's restricted. So it's been money that's been donated or fundraising that's been done for the purpose of a specific club, you can't, I mean, it's law, you can't do anything else with that. So it's not like they have $311,000 in cash sitting there to do whatever they want. Of that, about $39,000 of that's unrestricted, where, you know, it's just for whatever they want. But you can see Crockett at the most at 311, Boone coming in next with 261, Ridgeview third at 145. So you can see the significant drop. Now, what I believe we'll see, now the Boons Creek, that's combined, because last year, Boons Creek was separate, so I took those two schools and combined them for that number. My guess is you're going to see that gap really start to close with Boons Creek, it'll probably come up after this year. But nearly 1.5 million in actual cash sitting in the banks over the 13 schools that you see up on the screen. Now, the next graph at the bottom, I'll ask Carol to go to revenue. So actual revenue last year that came into each school location, and that just shows you the volume difference of the high schools compared to Ridgeview being number three last year, 235,000 in revenue, but look at the high schools. 600,000 for Boone, 710,000 for Crockett. I will tell you, for Crockett, that was about an $80,000 jump in revenue in one year, so obviously that was a flag. So not a bad flag, but I called the bookkeeper and said, "What in the world happened down there? You're talking a 10 or 15% jump." And a big part of that, most of it, it seems to be athletics, they had the Musket Bowl that they didn't have the year before, and that was the largest gate ever taken in, it's $27,000 just in that one gate. But there were several other pieces of athletics that we think that mostly came from, but yeah, that was an $80,000 jump. Boone was very consistent with what it was the prior year. But you can see as it goes down, just the volume, but each bookkeeper, you know, typically when you see the higher volumes, the bookkeeper's got a lot more work to do, you know, when you have 600,000 in revenue versus 60,000 in revenue, so you can imagine the difference on the accounting side of that. But it'll be interesting to see how that plays out this year, but since we don't really talk about activity funds, I just thought that might give you a quick little snapshot of what type of dollars you're talking about at each school. So with the book you have in front of you, the audit, FY19 audit report, we know the state doesn't audit this, Blackwood Children's Stigall is the accounting firm that's audited these for years. But just to give you some, first, the audit findings for these start on page 81, go through 89. The response to those are page 90 forward. But just a rundown of what the pages are, so page 10 starts the balance sheets for each school, page 10 and 11. Then you get to page 12, you've got the combined statement of revenues and expenses for each school, and that goes through page 17. And then you get into the fund balances at each school, which I've just graphed those, that's page 18 through 21. And starting on page 22, you get into the detailed school accounts. So an example, on page 22, I'll give you this one example, Boone, for example, I mentioned their fund balance, it's spread out over all those clubs. So starting on page 22, each one of those clubs, that's your breakdown of where all those funds are, page 22, 23, only even into page 24. So you can, I didn't count those up, you've probably got 100-plus different clubs and accounts that those are spread out over, but that's where the 261,000 we come in. And you can look at each school like that and get a breakdown. After that page, you'll get into the revenues and expenses, and then it'll repeat for each school in that same format, going from that page all the way through page 66. And then there'll be a section where there's transfer between accounts, and then you'll get in to page 75, 76, where it'll start the, it'll give you a detail of what internal controls are, and then the audit findings starting on page 81. We did have, and this is just for me to report to the board, on page 81 and 82, there were two findings that were material weaknesses. And it will, it's the school, it's the same school, the first three findings are all the same school, but those first two, page 81 and 82, material weaknesses, those did require, per Attorney Bennett, to report to the state comptroller's office. So per Attorney Bennett's direction, Dr. Flannery and myself had to report that to the state comptroller for those, for that school, for the previous administration. Page three is another finding, but not a material weakness for the same school, and then, you know, page 83 and then page 84, on the next few pages, is just other findings throughout. So certainly, any questions you have now, or after you've read that, feel free to ask myself, Dr. Flannery, or whoever you'd like. But then the response to each of those findings, including the two I mentioned to you, start after page 90, starting on page 91. So those two that I mentioned to you, certainly, the diagram being response to that is listed. And that's a breakdown and a summary of how the audit reports laid out. Certainly, questions now or later after this?
Is this document, this, I mean, to the public?
Yes.
Anybody's been requested?
It is a public document, yes. And I have an electronic version of that, PDF, that you'd like me to email.
It's probably on the comptroller website.
With the.
So it's already on there after?
It is, yes.
Mr. L, I would like, I mean, I'd like to say that, you know, since I know you've been in this position, you've worked really hard and diligent at your school, your site, bookkeepers and well, your principals, and, you know, we're looking forward to just keeping the pressure on and working to eliminate any of these findings.
That's the goal. It's, you have so many moving parts with the schools, especially with fundraising, they get you on yearbooks a lot, but there's just, it's different schools, you might have it, you might have a new bookkeeper come in.
But you have training to where you're trying to get everybody on the same page now, aren't you? So that's.
We've had a few of those. And when the board, about a year and a half ago, allowed me to kind of restructure one of my employees' positions and make a system lead bookkeeper as well, that's been very beneficial, because that employee's been freed up to go out and do hands-on training. They used to be a bookkeeper themselves, and that's been sending for sale. So I will tell you that that has really worked well, and we've had a lot of good results there as well. So we're going to continue to build on that. And the yearbooks is just a big, there's so many moving parts to that, and it just seems that that's always something that comes up, so we're certainly working on doing even a yearly training for bookkeepers on that, and the yearbook sponsors in the school, typically a principal will pick a teacher to lead the yearbook, kind of sponsor, and they'll work with the bookkeeper closely. Any more questions? Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
And now, a senior whose senior year is halfway over, and student board member Mallory McClellan, not only has the monthly reawakening, but also a recommendation.
So from my presentation, I kind of went back a little bit, like, oh, Jesus Quirter, thank you. So, um, from my presentation, I kinda went back a little bit, like, oh, Jesus Quirter, thank you. So for the first one, I decided I, I wanted to talk about the course concert we had at Boone. It was really nice. It was really cool. That picture right there is our reflections. And it was really good concert. We had two days, and we had a lot of people show up to them. It was really awesome. Okay, so I know Ms. Feen talks about this, but Ms. Haldren's students, they were in a CMA class. None of them passed their clinicals, and I said that they were one step closer to nursing, but now that I'm looking at that, I think that's wrong. Like, I don't know if it's nursing. I asked my grandmother, but I'm not really sure. Medical assistant, okay. Yeah, that probably makes more sense. But I thought that was really good and really cool, and also that they could do that in high school and, like, already have that. And then I put Christmas break, obviously, cause two weeks was really awesome to have off. And then Happy New Year, because it's 2020 now, and that means there's only one semester left left for the class of 2020. It's not much for me to talk about. And then something really cool that I was talking to my brother about yesterday is the Rhodes Scholars at ETSU. Um, we have one from each of our high schools. Keaton Smith, one of my friends at Boone, was there. And one of our own school board members, Ron Kill, was there. And they find out tomorrow if they are a scholar, which, don't mean to be biased, but I think that they both might get it. Yeah, they find out tomorrow. So I don't know. You'll probably know, but I don't really think, I mean, yeah. Yeah, but I thought that was really awesome, cause I found it yesterday. I didn't have any pictures, but I thought I'd put that. Yeah, that's it. Not, not much excitement since that's happened.
Well, this, we have a recommendation.
Yes, yes, can't forget that. Um, at the request of the director of schools and on behalf of Dennywood High School and David Crockett High School, class of 2020, I recommend that the date of graduation be set for Saturday, May sixteenth. Commencement for Davy Crockett will be scheduled for nine AM and with Denny Boone to follow at one AM.
And you go over that again, the dates or the times, I'm sorry?
Um, Crockett's is at nine in the morning, and then Boones will be at one on May sixteen.
Do I have a second on that?
A second.
She can't make a motion, that's right.
I make the motion.
You made the motion? If the candidate seconds it, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangher?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yep.
Mr. Hannah?
Yes.
Stanlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
We'll let the principals know. Finally, Mr. Chairman, the annual agenda calls for recognition of newly tenure teachers at this meeting. Uh, Human Resources is not able to do that yet because we don't have the, we haven't had the, the evaluations for long enough. I believe we should do that next month in February afternoon. That's the plan.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. That finishes my report, Mr. Chairman.
That's a very long report.
You better not say that. Next on the agenda is optional second grade testing. Who wants to start the thing?
I will.
Okay.
So I asked the chairman to put this on the agenda because we seem to always come up in two weeks before testing. And, um, I get phone calls and complaints from second grade parents because they feel like that this is too much for their second grade kids. And it ends up being last minute, as Mr. Meredith said last year. And so I wanted to discuss this at this point as a board because I am against the second grade testing. I think we need to let them be kids for one more year. I think they need to get a firm base. Um, I think we need to teach them to love learning. And those, those critical years, that K through three, those critical years, that foundation base is something that they need to be able to further succeed. And it's just, it's one more year of not having to teach the test. It's one more year of, of giving them the opportunity to do those things that we saw in front of us tonight. You know, that's a, that's a really good foundation and base program to set them up for the rest of their lives. You know, they're gonna be tested for the rest of their lives. And, you know, with the state going, with the testing, um, company that they went with, we have been in that testing place before with them. It didn't work out well. And it's just not the stress that we need to put on our second graders when we've just struggled and struggled and struggled with this test.
I agree. And the state considers it optional, and I think we should. It's too much pressure and stress on a seven-year-old. Like she said, we saw how much fun they were learning. That's having to have a seven-year-old sit through two hundred and forty-four minutes of standardized testing, which ends up being in two days, eighty-two minutes, have to sit and take that test. It's just not great appropriate. If the state required it, I think we should, but they don't. They consider it optional, and we should too. We have had several parents that have requested that we not test second grade. That's my feeling.
Anybody else?
We had this discussion last year, right? I mean, is this a?
It was, we didn't take any action last year or do anything because it was a, what did you call it? It was a last minute. You know, it, yeah, that's it. It was an eleventh-hour decision. And so, you know, I, I don't want to be bombarded in April when they start this. You know, I wanna be able, when people contact me, I just wanna be able to say, you know, the board's voted on this, and this is where their stance is at. I don't wanna have this discussion at the eleventh hour again.
But you know, we, and, and we've talked about it, and we said we was gonna wait, we got feedback from the principals and feedback from the teachers. I mean, I just wondered what, what we're changing. I mean, I, I guess what I, I mean, what you think, uh, Dr. Flannery? I mean, it's another data point, is what we've heard before, is a data point, so we can show the growth in third grade, where if we didn't have it in second, we wouldn't be able to show that. And I don't, I mean, I'm not an education expert, no matter, but I think that's pretty important, right, to have that growth? I don't know. But I think they make it fun. I know I got some phone calls from some people after we had that meeting and said, my kids think it's fun. And it was teachers. Now, you may have got some different phone calls. I don't know.
My kids have test anxiety from all the, all the pressure we put on, all the hype we put on. You know, go to bed, go home early. My kids go to bed at a normal, at, at a good time. You know, my second grader thinks that they have to go, last year, thought he needed to go to bed at six o'clock because teachers said to go to bed early. Well, to that, to him, six, six o'clock was early because he has to bed at eight. And it stre, it stresses them out.
Eighty kids, I'm sorry.
Is there already, is there another testing in place for se, for second grade to gauge their progress, the STAR test?
They test all the time.
So we have a test in place. This is just an additional?
There's, there's three or four different tests that they give them. They test OR, I see, O R, or something about reading. Um, they test them three times a year in that. Um, cause I just got the paperwork yesterday that they were testing again. Um, STAR three sixty is tested, and there's one more, um, that I get a paperwork about three times a year.
Well, we're testing the second graders now, right?
We are.
And look how good our results is.
They could be even better.
And what we don't?
If we gave them, if we gave them a year to where they could develop.
I went to some schools today, cause I was on the fence about this. And I went and talked. And I, everybody that I talked to was in favor of it.
The teachers.
The teachers and the principals. Now, that's what I, I.
What about the kids?
I went, because I didn't wanna ask, I didn't wanna ask Ms. Kyte, I didn't wanna ask Mrs. Flannery. I've heard her response. I've heard other response, and I, you know, Mr. Gangher.
We're talking to two separate, different teachers then, because that, I get the total opposite.
We did poll all of them last night. Oh.
Mr. Gangher?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Flanery asked Dr. Flannery, and he's been to me. Dr. Flannery ain't been able to give it yet. So, Dr. Flannery, well, you tell us what you think.
April a year ago, I polled every elementary principal of the second grade teachers and all the third grade teachers. The principals were unanimously in favor of it. Uh, the overwhelming majority of the classroom teachers were in favor of it. Uh, if I could continue, I called Mark Jackson, who's in charge of testing down in Nashville, and asked him how many school systems use the optional second grade assessment. He said a hundred. That's seventy percent of Tennessee school systems use it. Most of the rest of them don't use it because they use something that they buy off the shelf, like Johnson City. It's not my intention to argue with board members because you sign my paychecks. But if you rescind second grade testing, you'll be one of the few school systems in the state that don't test. I would also add that board policy, uh, you have a testing program policy, and I highlighted some that you have. There, uh, they did some research. The state did. Ninety-six percent of educators in Tennessee agreed or strongly agree that the second grade assessment aligned with Tennessee academic standards. Ninety-two percent agreed that the math field test aligned with Tennessee academic standards. Educators across the state quote, felt the test length and rigor was a good fit for second graders and thought the amount and quality of questions was very appropriate for second grade. And this is a document prepared by the state Tennessee Department of Education. Guys, I'm, I'm a ninth grade up teacher. I don't know second grade from nothing. This is what the practitioners have done well.
It's disturbing why they don't recommend it then. Why is it optional?
I can, I can see, I can see one teacher promoting the second grade test, and I can see another teacher that's maybe against it or, you know, I, I'm sorry to say this, but you've got older teachers and you've got younger teachers. And how things has changed in the last ten years. I've sat here on this board for fourteen years, and it's changed in fourteen years, you know, how, how things is. I, I, you gotta make it, if it's, if it's not counted, make it fun. Make it enjoyable. These kids was having fun right there. So if we're gonna test them in the second grade, let's make it enjoyable, you know? Tell the teachers to enjoy it.
Eighty-two minutes.
When is the last time this test was administered to our second grade?
Last year.
Mr. McLean?
May I read our own policy? Policy number four point seven oh two, uh, revised August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Title of testing programs, line twenty-one. The director of schools shall be responsible for planning and implementing the program, which includes selecting the appropriate test to be given. It's the same director we hold accountable.
Yeah, and if that right there, our test scores instead was not doing what it needs to be doing, he's accountable for it. And that's when we get on him. So what we need today? I'm asking for a roll call vote if we wanna keep this testing in place or not.
We have a motion, mate.
With what that says, what do you need to vote?
It wasn't even a motion, though.
Okay. I thought it was. I apologize.
I don't think it need to do anything, except the director.
Okay. Anybody else? Any more discussion on this?
Uh, so when we get calls from parents, we say where there's nothing we can do, it's up to the director, right?
Boarding policy.
I have a question.
Mr. Day?
I, I agree with what Mr. McLean just said. However, it does sort of bother me. I hate to say this, but when you just leave it up to the director, he, it's, it puts him in a bad spot cause then he takes pressure from board members.
That's his job.
This is our policy.
I understand that, but he's a human being. And, I mean, well, what I'm saying is, I think we oughta make it a standard. If we're gonna do it, I think it oughta be a standard, and, and if we wanna change it, the, our board or future board can change it, but there's no pressure for him to.
Well, the policy's written, it's his standard. He's running the organization.
I understand that.
You're saying change the policy.
I'm saying change the policy. And I'm not picking on anybody here, but I'm just saying, when you do, when you do something like that, and then you have controversy about half believes, half don't believe, and then that puts whoever the director is in a bad position. I think that.
Well, would you like to make a motion that we put this on our next policy meeting?
Well, you wouldn't need a motion for that, but if the policy committee wants to take, you know, a look at it, that would be an option, but I don't think this board needs to make a motion for that.
Which we just did in August.
Something needs to be done on the board.
That we just reviewed.
Well, I mean.
Well, what does Johnson City?
They use an off-the-shelf test if they feel is superior to the optional test the state provides. And they do so because they have millions more dollars.
But they test second grade.
They do. I, I talked to Steve Barnas just the other day because I wanted to know exactly what they do, and he gave, he outlined it for me. And it's similar to the protocol we have. It's just that they buy what they feel is superior.
I, I think that you give a price figure on that buy.
Yeah, they bust up six figures.
I don't, I don't disagree at all with what Marion Beth and Matt's argument is. The problem for me is, I don't wanna take a chance to find out if they're right. When I've got proof that it's working, I don't wanna take a chance to find out for a year or two that we should've kept doing it, you know, in all fairness. I mean, I'm, I can't say that it's right or wrong, but I know what we're doing's working.
We're the best county system and better than some cities. And I don't, I say it all the time, I don't know why we try to change things when it's working.
Mr. Charles, somebody didn't like it.
Mr.?
I'm curious, Dr. Flannery, you said you spoke to them about that particular, or they do test second grade. Do they do it as often? Did you ask that question?
The frequency is, is very similar to Washington County. Uh, you know, nine weeks grading period, and it kinda falls in line with that as a benchmark. Then you finish up the year with a full-blown assessment. And they use it like we do to make decisions on, on retention, and that's a big deal. You know, we're keeping back a second grader. You need a lot of data points. Uh, it's, it's not different in procedure. It's just different the, the test they use, the assessment they use.
And there's as many as all the.
Uh, it's, it's not many, but it's, uh, it's way up in five.
And it's only for second grade?
Right. And then in the third grade, you, they go.
They do the regular.
I don't know about first grade. I didn't.
Well, I know we, I have had several parents, um, and I have had several teachers that have not wanted to speak out for fear of retaliation, but that goes hand in hand. But, uh, who have given me the impression that their students, they, they worry about their students who are stressed out. And seven-year-old is very young. That's a very young, to have a week-long test. Some of them, like I said, yeah, I'm pissed now. I'd like to find out how long Johnson City has their second graders sitting at one test, cause eighty-two minutes taking a test for a seven-year-old. If you, if you've ever taught a seven-year-old, getting one to sit for eighty-two minutes is a big, uh, but I'm just saying, if this is what the group wants to do, I'll be glad to refer to the director.
Ms. Kyte, is it law that these students has to sit for eighty-two minutes to take this, take this second grade test?
Well, then, some parts are forty minutes.
There is, right here.
Okay.
Math is forty minutes and forty-two.
So there's six days tested?
No, no, it's, it's sometime, we usually decide that closer to, in March, we're talking with principals. And we may do two forty-minute sessions on a day. They'll do one in the morning for about an hour, forty minutes, but, and then you're distributing. distributing the test materials and that type of thing, and then you do one in the afternoon. And then you may do one forty-minute session the next day, but it can be spread out. We've spread it out for five days at one time, and the principals didn't like that, teachers didn't, they wanted it more in three days, so we talked that out and tried to do what was, was.
So you're telling me they do test in the afternoon because?
Sometimes it's eleven o'clock, depends on their lunch, sometimes it's one o'clock, so that there are.
For second grade, they test in the afternoon?
I don't remember the exact schedule, but we can do two sessions, two forty-minute sessions in a day.
Are there, are there any particular reasons why they, the, uh, principals and teachers didn't like spreading it out over a longer period of time?
It ju- that after a while, the students just weren't as motivated, and they appeared to do better if you did.
More concentrated time.
Mr. McLean?
So how many different sessions are there?
In second grade?
Yes.
There are two sessions of math, two forty-minute sessions of math, two subtests for math, and four, if it's the same this year as it was last year, and four for the, the literacy.
That's what I've got.
That's what I've got on the state.
Six total, six total.
Correct.
A total of two-hundred-and-forty-four minutes.
Yeah.
So that's just four hours, that's a long way from a solid week. Somebody said me to go test it for a whole week.
Six days, somebody said.
Yeah, six days.
No, I didn't say, I never said six days. It's always been four days. I'm saying it's four days, two days, some two days are probably forty-two minutes and other two are eighty, over eighty.
When you, there was a, there was a time when they spread it out one week, and it was like, I felt like they tested like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday in one week, and maybe Monday, Tuesday the next week. It was really, it was an odd thing that you've gone back to.
Went, well, we were on computer. And when we were online, you had to stretch it out because of everyone having.
And that was even worse.
To the computer, and so we're back at paper and pencil, and so it's basically four to five days right now.
Okay. Uh, committee reports. Athletics.
Uh, committee met earlier in the week on Monday, uh, it was dropped in your dropbox, and hopefully everyone's had time to read it, so I'm looking for approval of the report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor of the report, please say aye. All those opposed? Okay, Mr. Gang?
Okay, uh, no recommendations coming out of the committee. Uh, if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Other than that, done.
Okay. Bid review. Did everyone get a chance to look at the bid review report? Pretty short. Do you have, I'm gonna put that report in the, uh, form of a motion to accept it? Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the report, please say aye. All those opposed? Okay.
Okay, bids were compared and evaluated toward making a best dollar value expenditure for intended educational needs. Their, the committee, uh, recommends to award the bus purchase, complete Lyon Electric School Bus with the Dana TM4 Sumo MD Engine to Lyon Electric to Attica for three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars, meeting the full specs of the Volkswagen School Bus Grant Program.
I have a second? Second. Discussion, Mr. McLean?
I have a question. Just to, specs meet state requirements.
I'm gonna go ahead and note it.
That's right. I direct my question to Dr. Flannery.
At this time, I feel fairly confident in the answer, that question is yes. Uh, the state standards are based mostly on federal guidelines. Uh, Lyon Bus Company, they produce buses and run buses in at least five different states, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Texas, California, and I believe they're getting ready to enter into Virginia. Uh, talked to a gentleman for Lyon, Richard Lee, who has assured me that before they bid on our electric bus, that they went through the state's specifications with a fine-toothed comb to say that they felt that they met those specifications. Uh, now, I will say there, there's probably some room for a little wiggle room. Uh, for instance, the, the easiest case that I, I could tell people is a spec in California for the electric bus is that the, the front bumper's painted blue. They do that so that if the bus is in a crash, the, the, the emergency personnel approaching that bus know they're dealing with an electric-powered bus instead of a propane or a gas-powered bus. Tennessee, we don't have any electric buses, so we don't have a different spec for the bumper, it's bumper has to be black. Uh, if that's not the spec, to paint it blue if it has to be black, they're more than happy to paint it black if that's the case. Uh, Dr. Flannery and I talked with a gentleman named Joey Chilton. He is the, the head of the, uh, student safety for the Department of Education. Um, I've talked with Mr. Chilton numerous times now. Uh, he feels good about the specifications, and he also is willing to meet with Dr. Flannery and myself, and with any representatives from Lyon if there is, if there's something, uh, specification-wise that, that would need to be altered for that bus to meet any specific Tennessee safety standard.
Mr. Flannery?
And I hate to be the naysayer, but I.
No, you don't. You.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
This is, uh, first electric school bus in Tennessee.
Yes, sir.
And my other question is, it's not everything, we don't have a charging station in, in this price. There's a lot of unknowns we still don't have in that, and I, I mean, I've.
I haven't answered that question. Uh, we, we're doing two different things. First, we have to bid the bus, because based on what bus we buy, that could and does actually dictate what type of charging station. Now, inside the grant, there is additional monies for a charging station, but it's not included in the price of the bus because it's gonna be bid separately. 'Cause the grant itself is for four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars, and the bus is only three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, so the additional monies is, is meant specifically for any infrastructure, specifically talking about any charging station that may be required.
You know what, and I, I can't imagine, what, what's insurance gonna be on this bus?
I'm actually anticipating it's gonna be very similar to any other school bus. It's, uh, as far as safety, it is just as safe as any other school bus, or else we couldn't put it on the road. Uh, and beyond that, uh, it's, it's basically just another regular school bus. Uh, one of the reasons we chose Lyon is they are an electric bus company, and, and they, they have built this bus from the ground up to be an electric bus. They use somewhat different materials, still meet state specs, but it's not, it's not just a, another diesel bus with electric stuff in it, it's an actual electric bus. Uh, so I, again, I'm anticipating that the insurance would be, uh, close to the, the same as any other bus.
Anybody else?
So, the, I mean, we've got the bid here, so the, the purchase contract would require the bus to meet Tennessee specs, whatever those are, at their cost, not at ours.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. I need a motion that we purchase this bus. I do have it, do I have a second? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangor? Mr. Meredith?
Here comes a lecture. Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
I'm here.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
I'm gonna vote no to.
There you are.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Is that all you have, Mr.? Finance, Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met this afternoon at four o'clock, I'm gonna pass the, uh, minutes from that meeting around, I'll, when everybody gets it, then I'll read it to you. Yeah, well, now, um, shoot. Does anybody have a copy of the report? I will begin to read it. Finance, committee met on Thursday, July, or January the ninth, two thousand nineteen, four P.M. At the Washington County Department of Education Central Office, those present to me, Chairman Philip McLean. Committee members, Anthony Cannon, Mary Beth Dellinger, Ms. Meredith, Director of Schools, Dr. Flannery, Dr. Holcomb, Director of Finance, Brad Hale, also in attendance, Maranza McGee, Paul Masters, and Philip Patrick. The committee considered the general fund financial statement for the month of November two thousand nineteen, and the committee recommends approval. The committee considered the federal fund financial statement for the month of November two thousand nineteen, and the committee recommends approval. That completes the report, and I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second on the report?
Yes, sir.
Miss, well, Mr. Flainer, Mr. Dell, Ms. Dellinger, I seen Mr.
Flank.
Okay.
Ladies first.
All right, Ms. Dellinger is second. Uh, all those in favor of the report, please say aye. All those opposed? Okay, report passes.
Committee considers general fund financial statement for the month of November two thousand nineteen, and the committee moves for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gangor?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Aye. Motion passes, Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee considers federal fund financial statement for the month of November two thousand nineteen, and the committee moves for approval.
I have a second? Second. Mr. Flainer, second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Meredith?
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Flainer? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Gangor?
Aye. Motion passes, Mr. McLean?
That completes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the policy committee, we held our lovely meeting on Tuesday, uh, January the seventh at four-thirty, and that, uh, report is in your dropbox. I make a motion, will you accept the report?
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second. All of those in favor of the report, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Mr. Flannery?
Thank you, sir. Uh, the committee reviewed the policies for second and final reading. The following policies were five-point-six-zero-zero, five-point-six-oh-two, five-point-six-oh-three, five-point-six-oh-six, five-point-six-oh-seven, five-point-six-eleven, five-point-six-twelve, five-point-seven-oh-one, five-point-seven-oh-two, five-point-seven-oh-four, and five-point-eight-oh-three. We would like to recommend approving those follow, final, following policies on the second and final reading.
You made that in form of a motion. We, we, we pulled it.
Okay.
I make that in form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Gangor?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Those were approved on the second and final reading.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir, we, uh, we also tabled, I'm excuse, I probably should've said it first, we tabled policy one-point-eight-oh-three until we met again in February after some legal questions. Uh, the committee, uh, format, or we also had formal updates and editorial changes on five-point-eight-oh-four, five-point-eight-oh-five, and five-point-five-hundred, and no action was taken on the final formal updates or editorial changes. We did, though, follow, we did recommend approving the following policies on first reading, five-point-one-oh-six, five-point-one-eight-one-eight, five-point-three-oh-two, five-point-three-oh-five, five-point-four-oh-three, five-point-eight-oh-one, and five-point-eight-oh-two. We recommend approval on those first readings. Make that in form of a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, discussion? Is this, what they're discussing is what we need to be, is this, are they doing this instead of us having call board meeting and going over the policies? I thought we started this out as all the board discussed all these policies and approved what, if, what T.S.B.A. I'm kindly thinking that, I thought that's what our intentions was, and not, I mean, we started out doing it that way, now we ended up letting the policy committee go through it, so is that what this board wants to do? I'm kindly against it. Because I wanted all the board members to be involved in this, in these policies.
Well, I think Dr. Keys was wanting to do this and put it on there so we can look at it, right? For us to look at, um, you put it in our dropbox to look at, right? What is your recommendation?
I will do whatever the board.
Good answer.
Well, I think it was easier to try to get fewer people for the policy committee meeting. I think that's the, the direction of that. I think it was just easier to get fewer people and name a date and have it, and everybody be welcome than to have it in the full board, try to work around everybody's schedule and have it, but now that's.
Well, I mean, you know, I've just, I just felt like that these policies is, we're redoing, I mean, some of them were accepting T.S.B.A.'s recommendations and some were not, and, Mr. Gangor, you got something to say?
Well, I agree, because the whole purpose was T, for us, as a board, we had T.S.B.A. review our policy, send back with changes, recommendations, whatever, and it was first four.
Four sections we went over.
Sections we've done as a group, and it also gave us an opportunity for everyone to review the policy as opposed to just the committee. I think the committee, and this is just me, you know, I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes or upset anybody, but I think the committee probably should've started at section one and done it, uh, because I think through our board distinction, you know, we do have to do that, review each section, uh, individually, and so, personally, I think maybe the committee should be reviewing section one, and I know we just went over it, well, probably wasn't just, but back when, we went all through it, but review section one as far as, uh, following our board distinction, uh, requirements that we have to do, and then full board, I think, needs to continue finishing five and six, but that's my opinion.
Are they asking for us to finish it? Do you feel like there's any type of a timeline or anything, Dr. Keys?
Emily is encouraging us to finish it, because when we finish the section, then T.S.B.A. will house those policies for us, and we no longer have to, Jennifer, us upload those onto our website. Section six has not been updated as a whole for some of those since ninety-eight. So we need to get through section six. Mr. Murphy and I are reviewing those now, so, yes, I think we need to move through section six as soon as possible.
Well, I didn't think we was done with section five.
This will finish section five with the exception of one policy on interim invoice.
My argument is, is we went through all four, and.
My argument is, is we went through all four, and now we've stopped. I'm sorry, it's a call board meeting and everybody has to be there, but I just feel like that this is a board decision, not just a policy meeting. And, I, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Danger saying that himself. I honestly feel like we need to go through section five where we was at, like we've been doing. If everybody can come, okay, if you can't, that's part of it.
Yeah, like, I mean, everything that this, that this board approves takes a full board to participate in it. So, the question is, is do we eliminate committees for everything? I mean, why do we even have committees?
Yeah, I like that.
I mean, why, why do we even have a committee then? I mean, the ideal here was to have a committee to go through, to bring back a recommendation, much like a bid committee, to this board, for you to act on those recommendations. Now, if everybody's read the, read the policies and they're ready, if they agree with them or not, then now's the time to act on them. If not, then I guess we have no call meeting, but if we're going to do that, then we don't need a policy committee.
I agree. Well, the policy, I mean, if any policy, this is, when we let T S B A take our policies and go through them and update them, they would sign that was.
Also.
They changed, and then they signed that we changed, but I just, I just felt like the Policy Committee is in charge of going through the policy every year. But this, when we let T S B A do it, it's, it's brought the whole board together to, to go over it.
Well, if they haven't been updated since ninety-eight, it's obviously not every year.
They have been updated since ninety-eight.
Yeah, they've been.
Every year, we take the legislative changes they make down in Nashville. We go, we, the Policy Committee has gone through the policies, one section a month, with different people reading different policies. Dr. Flannery, for years, has brought us the legal changes that needs to be made, and one of the requirements of board distinction, you see all these plaques over here, is that we review all of our policies each and every year. So it has been reviewed since ninety-eight annually.
Mr. Day.
I was just.
Coming on it for ten years.
If, I think, I understand what you're saying. However, if they're all on our drop box and we have the ability to read them, wouldn't now be the time that we would.
Would you, I mean.
Oppose or.
In, in this, in this meeting, we'll make this meeting go that much longer if we have problems in that, in that policy. Would you rather not have a call meeting and discuss just nothing but policies and take care of all that?
Well, no, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, what Mitch just said, we have all these committees, and then we bring it right here and we talk about it all again. I trust you all to make good decisions in your committees. I want to know what you discussed, so, you know, vaguely, but I think that that's the whole purpose of the committees. I wondered all along why we have all these committees, but then we bring it right here and we talk about it all over again.
Aye.
Is there any of these first readings that there are changes to that are not law-bound changes?
Yes.
There is.
Yes.
Which ones are those?
We are making changes from first to second reading on five point eight zero one and five point eight zero two. The Policy Committee treated those like a work session, and those are the qualifications and duties of the Director in Recruitment and Selection.
And those are first readings?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And so those are not going for second.
Five point eight zero one and five point eight zero two.
Two, yes.
So why are we taking up the first twenty-four lines of five point eight zero one?
Because T S B A reorganized the Director's policies, and all of those qualifications and duties are moved to five point eight zero two.
Which we discussed in the Policy Committee.
I wasn't there.
I know. So those twenty-four lines are now five point eight zero two. I, I just want to try and clarify something. I thought the reason we were having the called meetings, now, it's been pro, our, our procedure, every year we go through the policy, through committee and make any changes that were brought to us or state law changes. But I thought because we're having T S B A review, which is pretty much a rare thing, that we were going through all those policies in each step. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. I, I mean, I can't.
It was a first reading.
This is not the norm to have those called meetings. We're just going through.
We don't, I mean, that, that.
They're taking time to do.
I'm sorry that we've had called meetings, but this is important because it's our policies and the whole board needs to be involved in our policies. I mean, I've not read this ref, policy number right here that she's talking about that has took twenty-four lines out of this policy.
Moved, moved from one to the other.
Yeah.
It, it's first.
Well, whether it's moved from one to the other, I, I didn't know that, so.
I was just clarifying, because I know Jason and Mitch and Chad weren't on the board when we started that.
Yeah.
That's not the norm that we have the called meetings for policy, to review it, just because we had T S B A do it. Typically, the Policy Committee does review the policies through the year, and each cha, any changes they bring to us each meeting, whether it be Tennessee, uh, wall changes or recommendations from the staff. But this is any difference, you've got a different entity making. I know, I just wanted to clarify. I don't think either one, we're trying to have a called meeting all the time on policy.
I, I guess I must've been asleep or something. I thought the purpose for the called meetings was because T S B A had made a lot of major changes, deleted additions, corrections, whatever they were, and we were doing it there to save time up here.
That's, that's.
Okay.
That's what I thought we were doing.
So here we are, we've wasted thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Once again.
So, those two policies that you just said for first reading are the only ones that do not have a law attached to them?
Yes. If, in the policy report on page three, um, I, it lists the policies, and they have legal updates identified by T S B A on them.
In the report, is that what it said?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I need to.
I don't have it.
I don't know what I need to ask, but do I have the authority to have a called meeting to discuss section five and go over section five like we've been going over section one, two, three, and four?
I mean, I, I'll be honest, I didn't have, I didn't get a memo that said what we were going through as a board to, to review it.
Well, that's what we've been doing for all four.
Well, we started before they were actually on the board. I mean, what, I, the direction we.
See, it was Mary Beth, yeah, he was on the board, because Mary Beth was the chairman of policy.
When, when we done so.
When we first started it, and now you're the chairman of the policy, so I feel like.
I thought we started this when Mike Masters was Chair of Policy. But I'm, this is not. I'll ask for a call for the question. So, if you will, if you will repeat the, the motion.
The motion and a second for those policies on first reading.
These are first reading.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to save some time.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and we've been discussing. I, I guess I can.
Put her to a vote.
Put her to a vote.
It doesn't matter if you vote yes here or no. I mean, we can still have a meeting to go review five, because this is just first reading. None's getting done, so we, what you were saying earlier, if you wanted to do that in a called meeting to review section five, we could still do that. It doesn't affect what you vote here.
Well, I hate to vote for some of these.
First reading.
First reading.
Okay. Roll call vote, I'm asking for.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Danger.
Uh.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
No.
And that concludes my report. I did not really mean to. I wasn't trying to, but we've been doing these changes for, I mean, I hate to, we've done this for the last few months, and we have been making some changes in the Policy Committee, so.
Okay. Staff reporters, you don't have nothing? Please get up and say something, Susan.
She can't copy us.
Okay. New business, W C E A, would you like to speak, Gina?
I would like to thank whoever's responsible for the message that I got that said we got paid today. Whoever that was.
All right.
Thank you so much, because Christmas broke everybody. Um, I would like to share something with you that the T E A has been working on with the support of the National Education Association. And there's a rally scheduled at the Capitol Building on March the sixteenth. This is a peaceful rally. Um, educators, pastors, community leaders, uh, school board members, students, from all across the, the state of Tennessee are going to get together. There are going to be chartered buses, it's going to be free, just have to register. And I wanted to read a little excerpt from the President of the Tennessee Education Association as to what this is about. Um, "We are taking action to fight for equitable and adequate funding for all public schools. We are taking action to fight for the professional living wage educators deserve. We are taking action to put an end to the test and punish system that unfairly targets teachers, students, and schools based on ten-ready scores. We're taking action to get back to focusing on what is best for students. More time for one-to-one attention and instruction, learning critical thinking and problem-solving skills, and creativity through a well-rounded education will set all children up for an academic success. Um, and the year two thousand twenty is a critical year for these thanks." Um, so I just wanted to share that with you. Uh, you're invited to go if you want to as well, and of course, I will be asking Dr. Flannery for permission to go. This is a Monday, and there will be a few other teachers that I know of who are wanting to attend this, so. Um, and there are other community members that I know in, in our area who are going as well, so.
When did you say it was?
It is, um, March the sixteenth.
And that's great. Sounds like a worthy cause.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. It's, it's something that we're all excited about, have flyers and posters, and hopefully we'll get the attention of legislators and people who make decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Day.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
When we're ready.
Will we make a motion, huh?
On, doctor, I want to make a motion that Dr. Flannery and his staff, uh, look at the bus route and possible consolidation and, uh, see how it affects the, the system and the, and the kids.
I have a second.
Second on that, okay. Discussion?
I, I'm not sure I understand.
I don't either.
Changing the possibility, changing the routes, adding another fifteen minutes to the route, just if we can add, save on buses or, or, uh.
We've got.
Bus drivers.
First of train.
That's what's.
We just need to model it. We want to model it. We've paid a bunch of money for that for ten years ago, yeah.
I asked for a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Danger.
Uh.
Mr. Irvin.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Flanner, you have your.
Yes, passing around the resolution right here that, uh, we had drew up. It's a call upon the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee to increase funding for public education. Uh, if this would be approved, we would sign this, have it sent down to, to Nashville, to our legislators, and also, on the day on the Hill, we would take this and hand deliver to them, who's going. Yes, I'd like to make this form of a motion, please.
Ray, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Any more discussion on it?
And you did say, uh, Scott Bennett looked it over and.
He's, he's going to actually come out with this.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote on this, please?
Hammond.
Yes.
She's Dellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Danger.
Uh.
Mr. Irvin.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got.
My, I do? Flannery does?
Uh, Flannery.
Flanner has.
It's coming around.
Okay.
Would there be any thought as to sharing this with some other districts in this area? I have a meeting with the other superintendents next morning, I'll do that.
I think some have already, I think. See, I think. I was thinking, for some reason, I was thinking y'all city already did. I don't, I might be wrong in that.
Thanks.
We're trying to get all their articles to play.
I don't know why I was thinking that.
I saw it on, something I was reading, when I was reading this, I was looking into it, and I saw their name attached to it.
We're a month away from T S B A Day on the Hill, February the tenth.
They may not be on the Hill anymore.
Or whatever it's called.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, that is still the date, right? February tenth, so.
Uh, I was saying, seventeen or eighteen, they did it.
Seventeen. But, so what my question is, is do, will we have, um, will we have anything that this board, other than this particular resolution, that we intend to take to our legislature? Now, you know, do we have a, a, uh, Washington County Board of Education legislative agenda? Do now? That one? Okay. All right. If we have any between now and the time we go, to say how old we can discuss. Todd, you said it's going to be, are we still, it's going to be more educational this time?
More, uh, legal, uh, they've changed it just because there's, Day on the Hill's always been a, uh, a hit and miss type thing, you know, if those that have attended, you probably noticed it changes every year, kind of, because, you know, one year they try to invite legislators, have a, kind of a meet and greet, bigger food type thing, and sort of, I mean, they, they're constantly trying to change it to make it better, to, you know, make it more beneficial, and they changed it again this year, and it's, it's still, and I think, more legal, uh, actually, I was, that agenda for it, but, uh, it's more legal issues, I think, and then, uh, it starts Monday, and I guess Tuesday morning, I think, there's another, uh, session, I guess, as you call it, and then, but I assume anybody that goes will then break away and try to meet with their legislators. But it's, it's going to be a little bit different format this year, but we'll see how it goes. It'll be for board members and, uh, you know, the legislators.
Still, just mainly, only one night would be needed to stay there.
Yeah. It'll start at like three, I think, on Monday.
Uh, roundtable. I'll start with Mr. Flanner. Happy New Year.
All right.
Mr. Hammond.
Uh, good meeting tonight, enjoyed seeing the kids, and seems like Washington County's moving in the right direction.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah, real quick, I met a lady last night, uh, at the meeting, and, uh, thanks to our Herald and Tribune, I'd read this article of Nancy Kavanaugh, and I just hats off to her and her Wild Women who raised more than five thousand dollars to help our students. I think that was awesome. Uh, and of course, as we saw in Dr. Flannery's, um, uh, uh, last week or week before last, of course, News and Neighbor, you know, highlighted the Quest Foundation grants, so just wanted uh, News and Neighbor, you know, highlighted the Quest Foundation grants, so just wanted to be sure everybody knew that, and that, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars to our classrooms. Excellent work, thank y'all very much. Happy New Year.
Karen?
Um, today in finance, we were told that we got some revenue, which is really close to being able to pay, uh, take care of the gray brick, and I would really like for facilities to check that out, see if that can be made possible, because that has been on there forever, and I just feel compelled that as good stewards of what we have and, um, being able to fix those things, I just really wish that you would, you know, really think about that, and that the facilities would take that up and look and see if that's even possible.
Talking about the money that came back from the E-rate?
I did, yeah.
So that's, that's money that got that cost the technology department because some of the E-rate funds went away, and there was a lawsuit filed, and this money came back to replenish some of those funds within technology. So you wanna use technology funds to do capital improvement, capital repairs?
Yeah.
Think about it.
I know, you know, we're being given like six hundred and forty thousand dollars a year from the, from, from the county commission for that, and I just feel like that it's, it's something that we can show good faith in that says, you know, we've got this money back, and we've been taking care of our technology needs, and, um, I, I'm not making a motion, I'm just throwing that out there, and if we don't wanna do that, that's fine too. Just really feel compelled, I just keep coming back to this money and that three hundred thousand dollars, that gray brick that I've seen for the last seven years that I've been right here.
One of the things that, if I may speak, Mr. Chairman, that concerns me about the gray brick is replacing it gonna fix the problem? What has caused the brick to do what it has to begin with? And I don't, I don't know that.
I don't know.
Somebody needs to tell us what caused it to begin with, and I thought, Dr. Flannery, at one time, that Tony was looking at that for us to try to find out something.
I see, tell me, I ask.
So facilities will be a good place to take that up, to not.
He did tell us what happened to that brick.
It's gotta be moisture coming from somewhere.
Yeah, he said that the, the metal that was, he told us all, but the metal and the brick joints over twelve inches, forget how it explained the moisture getting in behind the brick, but it rusted out the, he said after thirty years, or however that brick is, that, that, you know, when I was steel rusted, and that's what pushed the.
And if there's something else going on there, that may not even be able to cover it, so that wouldn't even be a, you know, an issue there, so, but just to check into it and see what needs to be done, because that was one of the things that was left on our list, we didn't even have a red place by it, and it's been there forever. So, and I really appreciate you, you've done an excellent job tonight, I really knew what you meant here.
Mr. Flannery, do you have anything to say? Glad to be here. Okay, Hannah, your turn.
Um, oh, well, this is, since it's my last time, I, when they first told me, like, you're gonna be on the school board, I was like, oh no, 'cause I didn't really know, like, what that meant, or like, what it was like, but it's also been a really cool experience, and not a lot of people could say they did that, and I'm really grateful that you guys chose me and like, do yours, 'cause I did not expect that, but thank you so much.
Uh, Ms. Barclay and her student teacher work so well together, this is an excellent program, and the hands-on experiences are so valuable. We have an excellent report card, but I'd like to see more school-to-school data, and I'd also like to see air data without university school. Uh, we have very little control over what they do, but repping their good grades, which is great, good scores, which is excellent, but kinda like to see a little bit better breakdown and give us a little more realistic, uh, information. The Jonesboro new school celebration was a big success, and thanks to the community for turning out. Thank you.
Mr. Dang?
Uh, be hard to top Ms. Dellinger, but, uh, a good meeting, I en, I enjoyed it, and I thank you all for all you do.
Mr. Flainer?
Always appreciate the humor you threw to bring to the meeting. Uh, it was great, um, board meeting tonight, thank you so much, the staff, for the report card. Um, every time we come up here, amazed at the job we're doing, and appreciate the teachers and our students. Uh, Ms. Barclay, see, she had a passion, Ms. Sanders looked like she was doing a great job too, hope to see her here in the future, would be great. Um, CTE, Ms. Phink, excellent job, I love what we're doing in CTE. Um, praying for all the kids that have been sick, I overheard somebody talking about some numbers, how many's been sick. Um, we know some firsthand that's been sick, and we just hope they get better quick, and we get out of this flu season very fast. And also too, I wanted to say, last but not least, uh, National Appreciation Day for law enforcement, and, uh, we got two of our finest with us tonight, and just wanna say thank you for everything that you all do for the kids and for us, and, uh, we just, we, I don't know how we'd operate without y'all, and we just thank y'all so much. It's all I have.
Mr. Danger?
Uh, I really enjoyed getting that bait on our system, uh, 'cause, I mean, we are, we're the best county system, uh, we're the best system, I think, but, you know, for the dollars that we get and the scores that we put up, I mean, it's, it's truly commendable, uh, teachers, the administrators, the staff, Dr. Flannery, uh, central office, I mean, it just, the whole group, I mean, we do a great job, and, uh, I mean, I'm proud to sit here on this board and see those, uh, numbers and statistics for us, 'cause, I mean, it's, I mean, imagine if it wasn't that good. We argue over stuff, and, I mean, bottom line is, our system's pretty dag on good, and, uh, so, uh, you know, I'm very, very proud of our system. And, uh, you know, I just wanna touch real quick on this policy thing, if I can, right quick, and you know, and I know some of y'all are new and whatnot, but I mean, we've never had TSBA review our policies like they have, or doing right now, and that was the reason that we were having the called meetings to go over the section one and section two, 'cause you're going over each policy as a board individually and looking at them, you know, as opposed to the policy committee reviewing a section, uh, reviewing every section throughout the year as a committee, and, you know, when we came here tonight, and we had a lot of different policies we're voting on, well, there's a lot that this full board didn't look at together, and that was kinda the purpose of having the full board meeting, the policy commit, or look at the policies, is just to get the full board there looking at every policy. We've never done that as a board. Uh, Dr. Flannery, you've been policy, uh, an official title, policy person, I guess, for years, I mean, do you ever remember the board doing that, or?
I required in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay, so I mean, and that was the reason we were doing it, and, uh, and I'm not saying anything about what happened tonight as far as the policy committee doing what they did, and that's fine, but I'm just trying to clarify a little bit of why, the difference in the two of how it was being done, uh, so hopefully maybe that helps out a little bit with confusion. And, uh, also Valerie, thank you for serving, and, uh, you know, you just kinda said, thanks for choosing you, well, you know, your body of work for your young eighteen years, uh, is the reason you're here, you know, so, I mean, you're a fine young lady, and we appreciate you, so, uh, we're glad to have you. That's all I got.
Okay, everybody take your calendar book out. We're gonna, we're going to, uh,
Calendar book.
Calendar, whatever, your phone, write it, ink pen, write a date, write these dates down. We have January the twenty-second is our first school visit, Davy Crockett and Daniel Boone. Okay? Van will leave here seven forty-five? Yeah, here's the sheet. Seven forty-five. I'm just going over my cheat sheet here. Alright, January the twenty-third at four-thirty, call board meeting, that was already scheduled last month. It is the Energy Performance Bunch that we're gonna listen to, three of them, that's supposed to come. We're giving them thirty minutes apiece. Thirty minutes apiece. Okay? Alright.
Wasn't there some, wasn't there something else we was discussing that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
I'm trying.
I'm so sorry.
We gotta establish a selling price for Booms Creek School. Okay, so everybody put that in your head and be thinking about that. And then I got, here it says, share about TSBA Annual Convention, now what does that mean?
That was what Mr. Mayor is, uh, being there for, just to see if people learn different things and different ideas, kinda like the BOE.
Yeah, the request, my, my request was for board members to bring one or two items that they brought back from the convention, and, you know, now that we're what, two months after, before they all.
Lord, first, I can't remember what we did.
That's my point, and, and go ahead and bring those back and, and lay those back out on the table and see if those are something that the board would want to pursue in some way, shape, or form. So the request was, if there was one or two items or topics that you picked up on at the annual convention to bring that and share that with the rest of the board at this call meeting, and then, you know, whether the board does anything or not, that's the board.
Well, I, I like the idea, but I swear I can't remember nothing right now. I apologize, but I got a lot on my head right, in my mind right now, but, alright, uh, change April board meeting date because it's spring break. And we have the top ten banquet on the fourteenth of April. So.
That makes Saturday, I think, will be the night.
The night?
Yeah.
What time's the, the top ten? Seven?
And that's on the fourteenth.
So you say the ninth is the meeting?
Or let's the next, that's the one you're.
Is that good with everybody, the night? Okay, the ninth it is. Alright. Uh, do you need to know, Jennifer, who's going on Day on the Hill?
I've already taken care of that.
You've done, took care of that? Okay.
Everybody that told me they were going, and I put down their own date, and that's for the day that's February ten.
Well, the calendar says, the date, we just received from, says the, uh, twentieth and twenty-first, or, no, I'm sorry, the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Yeah.
Well, that's what Mitch said, so.
Yeah, the, the, there are jin that have the date, that's how I.
President's Day is the seventeenth.
The calendar says the seventeenth, but, I mean, this.
Well, it was, it was on the back or something at the convention, that it was the tenth, because I put it down because I was like, that's weird, because it's always on President's Day, 'cause I'm, I was with my kids on that day, so.
Now, I found it on the internet, so you know.
That's right. That's, I looked it up on the website.
Sure, check tomorrow.
Well, we'll find out. Call, call them down.
Cause you got rooms whenever you're down.
Whenever they are.
Alright, that's, that's coming. I'm trying to get through my cheat sheets here. Uh, go down, uh, it says, let's, legal is February the seventeenth, okay, but.
Or the tenth.
Yeah, or the tenth, somewhere in that range. Alright, now, everybody look at your calendar and give me a date for a call board meeting to do policy.
May fourth.
In February?
If, if, I'm asking for a date. Now. Now, I'm gonna say this, I'm going to Louisville, Kentucky on the thirteenth, fourteenth, so.
That's when I could do it.
February.
January twenty-eighth, yeah.
Can we, can we check with Dr. Keys and see what she's, if she's.
We'll need her.
Yeah, we might need her.
Well, she's, are you available?
January twenty-eighth?
Uh, January the twenty-eighth, uh, my daughter has a doctor's appointment at four-twenty, but I almost got them after the, uh, after the midway Asbury thing on the third.
Let me, let.
I really liked when you said right afterwards.
I, I like that too. How about February third?
Cause we have a school visit that day.
Yeah, we'll have it right after.
Four o'clock?
Is that too early? If we come in and.
Uh, Mr. Danger, Mr. Flainer, is that four o'clock, too early for you all?
Well, midway, we're going to midway.
Hasbury, the bus ride.
That won't take long, will it?
On the third.
I mean.
Typically, we do those when we go to the.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but we didn't have time last time, remember? We had, we were only at Jonesboro Middle maybe.
Yeah.
An hour and a half.
Asbury's at, we're leaving for here at eleven-thirty, I mean, how long we gonna be at Asbury? Hour? Or is it gonna be more depth than it normally is, that's the reason for it?
Okay, maybe not.
Well, I mean, I, I'm fine with that, but I know some people can't make the visit, so if we're dead at one-thirty, I mean, we're gonna have meeting at two, and some people can't get there in time, or.
But with the money on it.
I mean, you, you won't, I may not.
Is four okay?
Four'd be alright.
Four?
Well, it would be better, it would be better for me at four plus whatever, 'cause I gotta milk, but I can get milking, somebody'll milk, I hope. If you wanna do it on the, you will go do it? Is, is the third the day you wanna do it?
I ain't gonna be here, but I hate to say it.
Where you going?
Fort Worth.
On the third?
It's right across your mouth.
It is right now.
I think that's about it.
I'm leaving the twenty ninth, and I'll be back on the fifth.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Keys.
Yeah, she can't do it. Alright.
Thirtieth?
Thirtieth?
Have we changed it already?
Thirtieth. January.
Well, about the thirtieth, everybody.
When's the middle school basketball term, is that not that week, last week in January?
I was thinking it's probably close to that.
Okay, we're back to the third.
Is the third good with everybody, March the third?
February the third.
Alright, excuse me, February the third.
That's your way for a long day, guys.
I should be a better.
February the third. Write that down.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock. Pause, call board meeting, pause, and then we'll have a regular board meeting on the sixth.
What else, we possibly have talked about that matter?
Well, oh, yeah, there'll be something coming. Yes, I think that's all. BLE. Okay. I won't. Yeah, I'm not saying. Okay, everybody, listen to me, I'm talking now. Yeah, I'm still, I'm. Everybody got to hear my, everybody got to say their roundtable, now I won't say mine.
Oh, we won't hear.
Yeah, you won't hear.
You hear Bill. Call us later.
Thank you all, this has been a good meeting, nobody got upset, and we've had a good meeting tonight, so. Meeting adjourned.